So we're going to call this meeting back to order, please, and ask the clerk to again call the roll, I think. Councilmember Terry is here somewhere. Councilmember Gatewood is also here somewhere. Councilmember Sander.
Present in the room.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Me too.
Mayor Budge.
Me too. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, read the TV announcement again.
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, May 10 at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, May 14 at 1:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Super. Thank you. We are going to begin our meeting, our regular meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our police chief, Chris Pittman, and then we're going to ask, invite everyone to remain standing, and Michael Hughes from United Methodist Church will be providing an invocation tonight. So if you'll all stand, please.
Ready, pledge.
United Methodist Church to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, sir.
Bow our heads, please. Almighty God, whose great commandment is that we should love our neighbors as ourselves and who has taught us that we should do to others as we would have them to do to us, we ask your blessings upon the mayor, the council members of this city, and upon everyone gathered here today. We ask that you will hold before us a vision of your will for us that will enlighten our goals and our actions undertaken in your name for our city. Grant us a vision of this city, fair as it may be, in the fulfillment of your purposes. A city of justice where none shall prey upon others, a city of economic plenty where greed and poverty shall both be done away with, a city of generosity where the needs of the unfortunate are met with care, a city of brotherhood where success is found upon service and where honor is given to nobleness alone, and a city of peace where order shall not rest on force but on love of all, of each other, and everyone. Bless this occasion if you have promised to always be with your people when they turn to you, our God and our Creator. Amen.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. We want to announce that two items are scheduled to be continued tonight, items 15.1 and 15.2. So if the city clerk would read those into the agenda, please, into the record.
Item 15.1, to be continued, a resolution of intention to establish the Rancho Cordova Property and Business Improvement District. Item number 15.2, also to be continued, Montalena Development Adoption of Ordinance 10-2018 to incorporate the large lot tentative map phasing plan into the development agreement and adoption of Resolution 64-2018 to revise the tentative map converting Street D from a vehicular connection to bicycle and pedestrian only at Rancho Cordova Parkway.
Super. Thank you, Stacy. So let's ask if you have any speaker cards for either one of those items?
I do not.
Great. We need a motion to continue these two items.
So moved.
Was there a date certain?
The date is May 21.
Okay, super. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so what that means, ladies and gentlemen, is that we are, we're going to do presentations and council reports and the consent calendar, and then we'll go right back into the community enhancement fund discussion. So, we are going into presentations, and we have a certificate of recognition for Karen Donovan, and David's going to present that. So if Ms. Donovan would join Mr. Sander.
Is Karen here? This is the fun part where we get to embarrass her a little bit. Welcome. We have a proclamation here honoring Karen Donovan for 25 years of volunteer service. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Rancho Cordova resident Karen Donovan has served the citizens of Rancho Cordova for the last 25 years by volunteering for the Rancho Cordova Police Department and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, and whereas Donovan moved to the Rancho Cordova Community with her late husband Don in 1959 from Hastings, Nebraska, the two were looking to join family in what was at the time new and small community of Rancho Cordova. Whereas in 1960 Donovan's husband worked at the Rancho Cordova Post Office and a spouse of one of his coworkers worked at Mather Air Force Base, she became interested in working there, so she took the typing test, passed after the second round, and started her new job. Donovan worked at Mather Air Force Base for 33 years on the administrative side and as a secretary for the commander of the 2034 Communication Squadron. And whereas when the base closed in 1993, Donovan began volunteering at Kaiser Permanente Sacramento Medical Center. One day, her daughter called to tell her that she'd heard the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department was opening its first service center in Rancho Cordova and encouraged her to start volunteering there. Whereas on September 1, 1993, Donovan began volunteering with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. She helped with administrative duties such as entering statistics for the gang unit in addition to participating in ride-alongs and prison tours at San Quentin State Prison and Folsom State Prison. And whereas now, at 85 years young, that must be a typo. Must be a typo. Donovan is giving back at the Rancho Cordova Police Department by helping with administrative duties such as entering all citations and driving under the influence DUIs. I thought I was going to say you were driving under the influence. That's no. She was entering that into the database of the traffic unit, processing paperwork and citations for charged shoplifters, and acting as the go-to person when anyone needs a proof reader. And whereas Donovan has been recognized for her volunteerism through a variety of awards, including the RCPD Employee of the Month, employee as a volunteer. That's pretty good. In January 2010, Sheriff's Volunteer of the Year by the Cordova Community Council from 2002, 2003, and Outstanding Service to the Community by the Sacramento Citizens Crime Alert and ACES Sacramento in 2008. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation to Karen Donovan for her service and dedication to making Rancho Cordova a safe place to live, work, and have fun, and in witness thereof, our mayor has signed and affixed the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to your proclamation. So with that, I'm going to present you the proclamation. And thank you for many years of service to our community and its volunteers such as you that make Rancho Cordova such a special place to live. So thank you for everything you've done, and now is the point where you get to make a speech.
I have nothing to say. I'm stunned. It's been a win-win situation because I need them as much as they need me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in a standing ovation for this woman who has served both her country and her community.
Do you want to do a photo with us? Where do you want us to stand? Chief, you want to?
I don't think anybody else who's going to present tonight can top that. Sorry, guys. Eric Kraus. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor Budge and council members. I agree, that's a hard act to follow, but hopefully I can give you some good information that's useful for you. I'm here today to talk a little bit about our time-of-day rates that will be coming soon and give you a little bit of information about why we're moving forward with these rates, what it means to you as customers, as well as the timing of that. And I apologize for my voice, I have allergies today. See if I can figure this out, too. There we go. So why time-of-day? At SMUD, the demand for energy peaks in the summer. As you know, we have hot summers here, and that's when people are using their air conditioners, when they're cooking their dinners, et cetera, and it especially soars during the weekday and late afternoon and evening hours. So the cost for SMUD, which is also the cost for our customers because you're our customer owners, increases as demand grows. With time-of-day rates, what it does is it helps us to reduce electricity use during the peak periods. Customers can also find two ways to save on their bills. They can better understand their bill by saving energy, reducing their energy usage, as well as shifting when they use their energy. SMUD can also avoid purchasing high-cost energy sourceage and produce less greenhouse gas. Often when peak power demand is high, the gas and the electricity on the open market is significantly higher. Again, that would drive our rates up if we have to buy at that time. And we also reduce the need to build more power plants that can have an impact, especially if they're built in our general area. So a little bit about the 2018 and 2019 time-of-day rates. First of all, we have a period called the non-summer months. Those months are between October and May of each year. Now you'll notice the pricing here, we have two different time periods. We have off-peak when the prices are low, and that's basically 21 hours of every day, every weekday, and completely off-peak over weekends. We have a three-hour period between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. where the pricing is a bit higher, and then we go back to off-peak for the remainder of the day except for the 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. You also notice in the small font down there, we offer a discount for people that have electric vehicles as part of their household load. In the summer, it looks a bit different. We actually have three different time periods. Mid-peak, which is in essence from noon to 5:00 p.m. and then 8:00 p.m. to midnight on weekdays. We have off-peak from Monday through Friday, midnight to noon, and then all hours, weekends and holidays. And then again, the 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. timeframe is when the prices are highest. As you can see, there's quite a difference in prices between this timeframe, and that's intended to give an incentive to shave peak during that high-cost time and help us to keep our costs low going forward. Few quick facts about TOD, or time-of-day, as we call it. Eighty-two percent of the hours each year are considered off-peak, and our off-peak rates are actually lower than what our current flat rates are at SMUD. Weekends and holidays are always off-peak, so you don't have to worry about when you're using your energy during the weekends and on the holidays. Summer peak hours actually only make up 3% of the entire year, so it's not that many hours over the whole year. The time-of-day rate is available to EV, electric vehicle, and solar customers in 2018, and we'll also be doing a small, what we call Friends and Family later this year where people can try it out before we go to full deployment. As I mentioned before, electric vehicle customers can save an additional 1.5 cents per kilowatt hour between 12:00 a.m. and 6:00, 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. And then the time-of-day 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. rate standard is the standard rate for solar and an optional rate for EV. The charts up there are just a different way of showing you how the pricing works out. As I mentioned, it's much of the time, the vast majority of the time, is lower prices in the non-summer months, and the summer is a short period of time from 5:00 to 8:00 where you really need to focus your efforts on reducing or shifting your usage. Now one thing I want to make clear is although the time-of-day rate is the standard residential rate, you do have an option. It's not a mandatory rate. Other utilities require customers to be on the time-of-day rate, we're not doing that. You do have an option to have a fixed rate, and the pricing is a bit higher. You're choosing to use energy whenever you want it, how you want it, you don't have to think about what time of day it is, and you'll notice you have a price in the 10 cents, so it's more than the off-peak rate in the time-of-day rate. And then all hours every day, you've got a different period of time during the summer. It's still more expensive during the summer to purchase power regardless of when you use it, so you will see a higher price. This current rate is much more similar to our current rate now that we have at SMUD for residential customers. Here's a little example of bill impacts. Again, we really strive to keep our bills low for our customers. What you can see here, if you look, I go straight down to the bottom cells here, the average, annual average bill per month is $100 per month, regardless of whether you're on our current rate or the time-of-day rate. So the monthly on average over the year doesn't change month. What you will notice is that your average monthly bill during the winter or the non-summer months will go down slightly under the time-of-day rate and will go up some in the summer, those four months. As I mentioned before, we're going to have a short Friends and Family soft launch, which will occur between September through November. That just gives us a chance to test this with about 10,000 customers, see how it works, make sure that the transition goes smoothly, make sure that the tools that we have available for them online to understand how to change their usage works well, and then the intent is to complete the mass transition ideally within the first quarter of 2019. That's all I have.
Questions for Eric.
Actually, I know when we look at SMUD there on Bradshaw, you have a lot of solar panels on your parking and everything else. Is there any suggestions you would make as far as, are there good businesses who are doing that, or are there some that really don't come up with the quality you look for?
Well, I think the best way to research information like that is to go on to smud.org. We have a site called Solar Answers. It can give you information on what to look for, what to watch out for, and also give you a calculator to help you understand whether solar makes sense, because with our rates as low as they are, it doesn't always make sense regardless of the provider. But rather than give you specific information on names of contractors, et cetera, it's best to go on that site and find out what we recommend you look into. We are also planning to be offering something called Solar Shares. That's an alternative. If you don't have the ability to put solar on your roof or maybe can't make the investment upfront, we have a program that we hope to launch by end of this year that allows you to purchase portions of solar that we put in a large-scale solar power plant, which tends to be more cost-effective than putting it on a roof, and allows you to have solar without having to have that on your roof itself. So that's something to look for later this year.
What was that again online?
Called Solar Shares.
Solar Shares, okay.
That's an interesting concept.
Yeah, it is. It makes it an easy solution for customers.
So when you talk about average dollar amounts on your bills, what's the kilowatt-hours, the kilowatt-hour that you assign to calculate that?
Boy, I believe it's around 700, but I'd have to double-check.
So it's like the...
700 to 750 kilowatt-hours a month?
It's like the tiers that you had for a while.
Correct.
So everybody was supposed to use 800 or less.
Yes. That was a breakpoint typically. Before, we had the tiers, and that was the point at which it started rolling over.
So on your PowerPoint, would you please make the PowerPoint available to us so that we can post it on our website and have a copy? Personally, I loved the time of use when we bought an electric car. It made us eligible for the time of use rate, and it really worked out for me personally simply because some of us, and I think all of Sun River still has the old all-electric houses, or a significant portion of Sun River, and so for years, you had a rate 14 that was a time-of-use rate that was available to everybody, and if you're just the normal, the average person, it's not difficult to use electricity at night instead of at 4:00 in the afternoon in the summertime. You simply wash, you turn your dishwasher on after, when you're ready to go to bed, or you turn the washing machine on early in the morning or whatever, and it just really works out.
Yeah, and we will actually have some education and commercials and a variety of things coming forward to help people understand what kind of slight shifts you can make. It's not that difficult to make those changes.
I've always wondered how the electric meter knows it's a holiday.
It's actually the software behind the scenes that know. The meter does not know, nor does it know that it's a weekend, but it's the software that we use to calculate the bills that does know.
I figured the weekend wasn't too difficult to program into it, but I couldn't figure out how it knew it was a holiday, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Very good. So if there's nothing further for Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And Cyrus, we have new employee introductions?
We have a number of them.
Yes.
If we could start with, maybe with the list that we have on this page. Let's start with Brandon LeBelle from our Building and Safety.
Hello. This is Brandon LeBelle, our new building inspector. He's worked in a lot of different areas, so we're looking forward to his input on how other areas work.
Well, we know who he is. Who are you?
Oh, I'm Howard Williams.
Thank you.
Principal Building Inspector, City Rancho. And now, so you know LeBelle is French for the beautiful one, so you guys are more than welcome to address him as Brandon the Beautiful One if you wish.
That goes for everybody.
Is that your website, the Beautiful One?
Dot org.
Well, Brandon, welcome. Do you want to tell us where you came from or...
I came to the city a couple of months ago. I worked with a company called Fourleaf as a contract building inspector, and I worked here for a while, and a job opening came up, and I decided to take it and, to apply for it, and I got it, so here I am.
Well, we're pleased you did.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He communicates well with the public, and he's learning a lot and teaching us a lot, so it's exciting to have a new employee.
Great. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Next, Albert, if you would introduce your employee, please.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And this evening, I'm pleased to introduce Charlie Collado. And Charlie is filling a position that is vacant due to a lateral transition of staff here within City Hall. Charlie has a bachelor's degree in economics and a master's degree in public administration. He has a really impressive background, including as a soldier for the U.S. Army, and he's currently serving in the Army Reserves. He recently was, comes to us from the City of Burbank, or excuse me, yeah, the City of Burbank, where he served in multiple different capacities, and he'll be joining us to help to implement the challenging and multiple funds that we get because the city's been very successful in achieving funds, and so he'll help us to manage those funds, pursue new funds, and also implement special projects. Charlie is eminently qualified, and he's already hit the ground running. We're really excited to have Charlie join us.
It sounds like Charlie gets to manage the federal paperwork.
Yes, I do.
We don't envy you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Super. Anything else you'd like to say?
Just glad to be here. Thank you, Albert, and the Public Works Department for giving me a warm welcome to the city and to the HR department for making sure that my onboarding here was seamless and smooth, and I'm excited to be here, excited to serve Rancho Cordova as an agency and as a community.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you for your service to your country.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Sparkman, please, if you introduce your, or reintroduce one of your employees.
Oh, he brought his family. He's the little kid.
So Elizabeth Sparkman in Community Development, and it's my pleasure to reintroduce you to somebody you already know. She's been here since August, working with the city, and for the last couple of weeks, she works for the city, so it's my pleasure to introduce Darcy Collard to you, and maybe she can tell you a little bit about her background.
Thank you. I think most of you know my background, about 20 years of planning experience, so I'm really excited to be part of the city permanently, and I look forward to continue to work with you all.
Wonderful. Welcome, Darcy.
If I could ask Brenda Roach to please join me. Council, I'm very pleased to introduce to you Brenda Roach, who has joined the city team as our HR manager. This is a position that has been held vacant since 2015, and with the recent retirement of Diana Rodriguez, we thought it would be a good time to fill this position, and we put an announcement out, and Brenda has joined us. She has well over 16 years of experience, mainly in architectural engineering and construction in the private sector, so she brings a wealth of experience to this organization. Really glad to have her. She received a bachelor's degree from Villanova University and has a master's degree from Human Resources in Organizational Development from San Francisco, University of San Francisco. With that, I'm very pleased to introduce Brenda, and I would ask her if she wants to add anything to my brief introduction.
Thank you, Cyrus. Thank you, council members. I'm very excited to be with the city. I'm excited to walk into my first job in the public sector. My husband recently retired from the Sheriff's Department, so I have experience in the public sector, but as a spouse, so I'm excited to be able to serve the community of Rancho Cordova.
Super. Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you.
What an amazing, talented group of people. It sounds like future city managers in training, almost. That's terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Cyrus. Okay, now we're going to go into public comment, and citizens wishing to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda may do so at this time. And again, we hope that everyone has completed their speaker card, their speaker request card, and we would ask you to take three minutes to tell us what's on your mind, and remember, please, that we cannot, as a council, take any action on your items because they need to be listed on the agenda, but we would be happy to suggest a staff person who can either take care of the item or schedule it for a future meeting if there's something that needs some action. So do we have any speaker cards?
I have two speaker cards. Mida Keshat, will you please come forward? And following Mida will be Gerard Souter.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here tonight because I remembered last Fourth of July when we thought that Rancho Cordova was being hit with bombs and rockets, and it was so intense that people did not leave their homes for fear, that their homes might burn down or their pets might go berserk. And so we were talking at the VINS meeting last week about what can we do to make this a more civilized celebration? And I don't see why it's a problem. We have that marvelous fireworks at Hagan Park where thousands of people go, and it may come to the point that maybe we want to forbid private fireworks. In our neighborhood, there were several spots that were just overwhelmed with illegal fireworks, and I understand this had happened all throughout the city. What I'm proposing is, when we use enhancement funds, one of the first things that we talked about when we voted on this was public safety, and I think that maybe I should put a bug in your ear that I have nothing but praise for law enforcement and the police department... for law enforcement and the police department. It's just on these certain occasions, we do not have enough. And I think it might behoove the city to think about putting a pot of money into the safety box for special occasions when there needs to be a bigger presence of law enforcement on the street. And I don't know where these illegal fireworks come from, but they are so frequent and loud and dangerous that I'm surprised we all don't have PSDQRS or whatever we get from being in war. So that's my comment tonight, and I hope we can solve this in some sort of a way where we can still celebrate Fourth of July without it being so dangerous. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mida, thank you, and our assistant police chief is in the back of the room, and we should probably have a conversation about plans for the Fourth of July, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gerard, if you could please come forward.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I actually don't live in Rancho Cordova, but I've worked in Rancho Cordova since 2001. I live in South Sacramento County.
What's your name again, please?
Gerard Sauter.
Thank you.
And I work and live in Galt presently. I'm one of the lucky people that gets to traverse Sunrise Boulevard on the way to work every day. And I see that the council recently approved a speed limit reduction on that road. And when I looked at the city council agenda, I didn't see the speed surveys on there. So I did ask the city to provide them, and I see that based on the speed survey, with dropping the speed limit to 50 miles an hour, you're going to have 64% of the people on that road considered speeders. So I don't know what the threshold is for the city and the police department to stop people, but I'm just a little concerned that it was less about safety and more about trying to generate some more tickets. The justification was a little weak. It's a rural area, low pedestrian traffic, very low accident rate. And I also noticed on the other areas of Sunrise, they recommended the speed limit stay the same, and the accident rate is higher. So I was a little curious. It seemed like that rural area was targeted for a drop, because they know most people go about 55 on that road.
We would suggest that you talk with the police in the back of the room. There are actually, Adam, do you want to provide the, there's a specific code citation that applies to how you set the speed limit at a certain percentage of the people, of the speed that people are traveling?
Yeah, we'd be happy, the police chief and I would be happy to provide that offline. We'll be happy to give you our contact information in the back of the room.
To my understanding, it's not an arbitrary decision by anyone. There's a state law mandated formula of some kind.
I'm aware of the 85th percentile. The 85th percentile was 57 miles an hour, so the traffic engineer decided it would be best at 50. So by dropping it to 50, 67 out of the 105 cars surveyed would be in excess of that posted speed limit, so.
The other comment I would make is, it's common to think that we get a lot of revenue from speeding tickets and other violations, and the reality is, the state and the courts take about 99% of those dollars for their own use. So given, you know, if our officer wrote a ticket, we probably get something like $2.50 actually to the city. So there's no way we'd ever make money writing a ticket. But that, it's a common thing that people think. I just wanted to clarify, this has nothing to do with revenue. It must be a professional judgment of an engineer somewhere, Cyrus.
If I just may add to this comment, the speed limits are established based on 85 percentile, and there are no, but the code, the vehicle code, allows the city engineer to make a determination based on specific site conditions or specific safety needs. So in this case, in this specific case, what you referenced as a rural area part of the city, we have a growing community. We have more than 3,000 homes. We now have shops and stores. So what's being perceived as a rural part of the city of Rancho Cordova is, in fact, a very growing and very busy part of the city. So all the speed surveys are double-checked, and they do meet the state requirement. So it's not arbitrary, and it's not for the purpose of generating revenue. They are, the most and foremost is about safety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have another speaker?
No, we did not.
Okay. Super. Thank you. All right, then we're going to go into council reports.
Thank you.
And we'll start with Mr. Terry.
I would just also point out, we don't have a rural census tract in the city of Rancho Cordova.
No.
So, nothing's rural. So first, I'll just start off with my hat as Chair of the Sacramento Air District and remind you all that it is now check before you burn season.
Right.
So if you're going to fire up your outdoor fireplaces or your indoor fireplaces, you should check before you burn, or you could get fined. Had a great time at Cap to Cap. This is, I believe, the first official meeting since we've been back to actually have reports, so I did go. I enjoyed chairing the Community Resources Team. We met with a lot of different folks around homeless services and affordable housing. And I'll keep this brief, because I know we have a lot of other things going on. Attended the Airshow's Positive Altitude event that was over the weekend, where 10 lucky kids got flight lessons by writing an essay. It was actually, I think, the best one that I've been to in a while. They actually didn't have a program, so kids weren't asked to like sit still after they gave them cookies after lunch and sit there and listen to a speaker, but they got to go out and climb through fire trucks and planes, and the Coast Guard brought out some planes. So great event. Got to give my hats off to Julie Hagan Belka and her family and everybody that put on, again, a very successful Rancho Cordova Golf Classic, right? Yeah. This is the third year that they've done it. I believe it was sold out again this year. Great event, great time. Thank you to everyone that was involved. David wasn't able to join me at the Falls Cordova Two by Two a couple of weeks ago. We had a very, a very robust discussion about early childhood education, which is something that's really been driven out from our education forum with the various superintendents and the president of Folsom Lake College and some other folks. And so one thing that we're exploring that, when we get to Measure H, again, I'll talk a little bit more about, but there's a model that was won through the mayor, through the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge. We might have even brought this up in the workshop that we're in, and it was called Providence Talks. And what it essentially focuses on is that lower socioeconomic children, by age three, hear 30 million less words than their affluent counterparts. And one of the things that Providence looked at, and they actually created some technology, like a pedometer basically, that counted the words that a child heard during the day, and they worked with counselors and educators and with parents working with them, to try to figure out strategies and ways to talk to your kids more, to read to your kids more, and to remind them of doing that. And they have some really great results that they've, that they come through. And so one of the things I'd like us to explore at some point, and we talked about this at the Falls Cordova Two by Two, was how can we incorporate that into all of the early childhood development work that they're already doing? And then finally, got out, did a couple of media interviews at Kids' Day in the Park. Great day, great weather. And I say great weather, because I think last year it rained out. I was in DC, but I'm pretty sure that did happen. So it was a lot of fun. Hats off to the community council and everybody else that worked so hard to put that, that event on. The kids loved it, and they had some insane bounce houses out there, but it was fun.
Did you participate?
In the bounce house? No, they were too big for me. I let my seven-year-old do it. They had some really, they had some very complicated ways of getting up to the top of the slides on some of those, and I'm not in shape for that. Too tall.
Thank you. Garrett?
All right. So I went to the Cap to Cap. I got to learn a lot. I didn't understand what it was for, until you get 400 decision-makers for the entire city of Sacramento, Rancho. And it's very interesting, because I got to actually sit with people, like the Chief of Fire, some big officials, and actually get to talk to them about, you know, how they could help out Rancho. So that was really an interesting event. And then also, I got to go into congressman offices, got lost in some tunnels in Washington, DC, panicked a little bit, because I'm claustrophobic, and the guard said, I was like, I just can't find this place. He's like, I'm going to help you out. He's like, go upstairs and go across the street. I was like, oh, so embarrassed. That's scary. Then I learned about fuselage and fusillaging and all new words as I went to Garland, let's see, I tracked up, because I didn't think I'd use that word. I went to Garland, Texas, and I am now a professional urbanist. So Linda, I want you to know that I understand that 1,000%, exactly what they're talking about, and still thoroughly confused, since they said it changes on a daily basis. But the most interesting part is, is I've been blessed by the city to be able to go around and see other cities. And the interesting part about bigger and smaller cities and what they actually do and how it could actually affect Rancho. And so the interesting part about urbanism is, it's making a city design for humans and not for the metal vehicles that transport the humans around. Whereas the roads seem smaller, there's bigger parks, they push the houses together, they put trees on the outside, so people that walk feel safer, and it's this weird kind of warm feeling when you run through the city, because it's smaller. And so you can still get around a car, but the roads are so tight that it slows cars down, so you don't race through anyone's neighborhood. You slow completely down, you're very, but it's just this nice, interesting feeling. I got this feeling of like, that's how it was before cars were, or before cars became such a major piece. You know, the roads were built for humans to basically get around. So really interesting. And then I got to see how, kind of blew my mind to see someone with a $700 million budget, because it kind of, Cyrus was fun, because he was there, and he's like, well, so what's your guy's budget? And they're like, 700 million. And he's like, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you exactly. Was it 30 million? No, he's like, 700 million. And, okay, so the only thing that was weird was, you can drive for two and a half hours and see the same house every five minutes, because you're still in their neighborhood. I was like, that is nuts. However, the cool part is, is they've done an excellent job in Garland, Texas, about separating out rules and really giving good defining, what's it called, high-level descriptions to their bosses or their group, so that they come back and deliver what you really want. So I was really, I was really impressed by that. And they really love David, and so they're like, hey, they're like, you can send your staff here, we're going to go to a major meeting, where they were fighting with the governor. So as much as Texas likes to pretend like that we're kind of, you know, we're out there when it comes to, as much as we are, Sacramento never really comes out and reaches in and changes all the little rules that cities make. So a city out here is allowed to make a mistake, make a rule, we're going to try it out, we're going to, you know, if it works, great. If not, you know, the state will be like, yeah, that was a bad idea, you really should change that. In Texas, if someone make, like a city decides that it wants to make a rule, it's almost like the rule for the governing body to come and try to change that immediately. So the cities wait for their, because there's only a part-time legislator. The legislator to come up, go away, then they pass some rules and see how long they can run with it before they come back and pass the rules. And they got in a big old fight with Uber, and like, it was crazy. And so the governor, they took us in this meeting and all these, you know, and still, I was a little disappointed. I was expecting to see a bunch of cowboy hats and cowboy boots, but no one had any of that on, so I'm sorry, that's not how it is. And, and they went in this room, and they were all arguing about, they had this interesting idea on, the best way to fix congestion is these kind of interspliced toll roads that people can buy certain lanes and they get, but let me understand, where out here we have three lanes, they have five-lane roads, both sides. And then they're like, well, but the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth lane, you can buy on toll. And I'm like, eight lanes? And then we drove one of those. Those things are, I was like, how many people are out here? And they're like, how long did you drive? And I was like, this is crazy. So really interesting ideas. They said eventually, they think California will basically go that way, and I was like, I don't think we're going to charge for people to drive on those. But you never know. Interesting idea. The interesting part was, their whole city is based around the economics of having these big companies, and they have to be able to get the company's materials all the way to the airports. So it's in their best efforts to have a road that the companies can drive on to be able to get, because it keeps more jobs in their city. So it's all logical, makes total sense, very interesting. And thank you for the city for allowing me to go, because I think I blew it out of the water and represented us well. I learned all about certain fusillaging and fusillage, and so we are on top of this. Next thing, I got to do my first, I guess it's planting of trees by myself with my golden shovel, and that was at the Kilgore Cemetery, where I learned about the cherry trees, which were amazing. And then Bob brought his daughter, who decided to dig one of the holes the whole time, which was super cute, because she was throwing, granddaughter was throwing dirt everywhere, and that was awesome. And that was one of the many things that you guys should get on, because Rancho Cordova is celebrating its 15th birthday, and so that's going to be ever 15 cool things the city's doing. I went to Folsom Lake Foundation Innovation Makerspace Lab. I learned about, you know, their idea of a Makerspace Lab. It was interesting, because I walked in, and they were having technical difficulties, and I'm an IT guy by nature, so I started fixing it, and then people who were coming in started asking me about Makerspace Labs instead of, I was like, well, I don't actually work here, but I think it's very interesting. So I would love to see some of those tilt up in Rancho Cordova. I got to do, thank you, Linda, I got to do the half marathon. So I drug two little, very young children to a half marathon, who ate a bunch of donuts and then got to blow the horn, and I was given a speech to give, and it was all about the water fountain, and because we put a water fountain back in the area where everyone's running. And so I was all, well, this is going to be cool, I'm going to talk about this, and I have something to say, and it's a half marathon. And so I got there, and the guy that was running was like, first, I would like to tell you how amazing this water fountain is. And he's like, blah, 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 and in 15 minutes, he's like, here you go, what do you want to say? And I was like, thank you, water fountain. Wonderful. You're welcome. And then I got to blow the horn, and the kids chased after, tackled some people, it was great. I'm not done yet. Then we got to go to a picture for Abraham Lincoln, for, that was cool, and Donald was there with me, and so, and all of us were there for the Education Excellence Awards, and so we were there for that. Then I got to do the, thanks to Shelley, it was a great event at the Cordova Community Council Golf Event. I don't technically golf. My handicap is the game of golf, so I just drove the cart. I almost killed Donald, but there you go. The last one was the cops and kids, and that's an important thing, because I believe that having our law enforcement around the kids and helping them out is one of the best ways to stop a lot of crime. And luckily, I talked the police chief who was there into losing, so I could look better when I played. And I think, yep, that's it. That's all I've done.
Thank you.
Linda, can I clarify one thing? I was wrong. It's not check before you burn, it's spare the air started May 1st. So you should be checking by.
Right. But the sentence is, check before you burn.
Yeah, but you get fined between November 1st and February, and the end of February, I was wrong. This is now, check before you go outside.
CheckBeforeYouGoOutside.com?
Spare the air, whether or not you want to drive, if it's unhealthy for at risk, so. I forgot my, my two different times.
You got your, yeah, you got your parts of the year mixed up.
It's okay.
David?
Board chair's got a lot going on, you're excused. Yeah. Council report. I went to a whole bunch of meetings. Sacramento Placerville JPA today with Linda, Capital Southeast Connector, Secog times two or three. Went to the Secog Regional Futures Event, saw a couple of you there. That was a nice event. I cannot believe that it's been 10 years since we got the blueprint group together to do one of those region, everybody come, talk about something event. Those are really important. There are things like Cap to Cap that happen that bring regional elected people together, but we really need, I think, an ongoing series here in our region that accomplishes that. A, not everybody goes to Cap to Cap. B, it's, can be expensive, you know, if you're thinking about that as the main vehicle for getting your local electeds together. So I commend Secog for doing that. My anticipation is that we would be doing that on a regular basis, probably slightly different topics, or, you know, something obviously aligned to transportation, but not necessarily totally bound up by it. We had a great athletic triumph in Rancho Cordova, which I had a little personal role in. The St. John Viani track team, one, the boys, won their regional track meet. So that was over 20, or about 30 schools, I guess, that competed in that. So your kids, if they're going to St. John Viani, or if they're in Rancho Cordova, have an... they're in Rancho Cordova, have a, a great track program to be part of. It's something we should be, we should be proud of. Probably the thing I'll talk about most is the trip to Garland, which we took. So thank you, Garrett, for that little, that little introduction. Um, a friend of mine, someone I've met, kind of a mentor to me in a lot of ways, uh, is the retiring mayor of that city. And he has worked a lot. Um, of course, Bob knows him as well, having served on first tier suburbs at the NLC. He's worked a lot on what happens in aging suburbs. And, uh, Bob and I visited there, I don't know how many years ago, Bob, eight years maybe, uh, when they did the first, yeah, the first tier suburbs, they hosted it. We've hosted it since, but he hosted it there once. And they have taken on a lot of the same issues we've taken on. And it was very interesting to get our staff to talk to their staff sort of on a eye-to-eye extended basis about the challenges we have in common and some of the nuanced differences. So I think the way they handle code enforcement, the way they handle economic development, um, the way they handle these massive infrastructure projects, these Texas-sized infrastructure projects. Um, as an example, the, their Highway 50 equivalent that comes through their community is, uh, like a three and a half billion dollar upgrade project. Just get your head around how gigantic this stuff is. And the city is larger than us.
Yeah.
Um, and it's part of Metro Dallas. But nonetheless, there's a lot of issues really in common. They've got a struggling downtown. They've made some really great, uh, public investments into rejuvenating that space. And it hasn't quite taken off yet, but you can see remarkable change from what it was even just eight years ago, Bob. Eight years ago, you and I saw the first, the first block done. Now they're up to, you know, three or four blocks done like that. Um, and it's kind of gave us a vision for where we might be headed in the next phase of our, you know, management of a, of an aging suburb. So I want to thank you, Cyrus, and staff for going along on that trip and Garrett for attending. I think as a sideline, Garrett was referring to a new urbanist community that we visited in greater Dallas. Um, most of us now have done that. I'm not sure Donald's, have you been to one yet, a new urbanist community? You weren't, outside of Nashville, West Haven? Were you on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've all, we've now all seen it, what a new urbanist community is like. And I think that, that is something worthy of our discussion and attention moving forward, how we can make our future development look more like that mold as opposed to what's typically done around the Sacramento region. So that was not a planned actually part of this trip. It just happened as we were being toured around the Dallas area, but I think a really valuable part. So thank you, staff. Thank you, Garrett, for, for coming on that. Um, we did make the offer to Garland. If they wanted to send people here as sort of the reverse exchange, we'd be happy to host. I don't know if they'll take us up on that or not. And I do think, you know, going forward, each of us should look for those opportunities. The one, uh, the study mission we did immediately before this was Visalia. I don't know how many years ago that's been, five years maybe?
No, it's been a long time.
Or longer, when we went to Visalia. That was enormously beneficial to us too.
Actually, it was within, uh, maybe six months of Donald getting elected.
Yeah.
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 2010.
So maybe, oh, eight years ago. That long already.
I knew it was a while.
We should probably do these a little more often than, than every eight years.
Well, we used to do it every year. We would, you know.
Or local.
Uh, well, not just local, but, um, when, um, um, when we were going to the California League of Cities and, uh, several times, that was the, that was the excuse. And a bunch of us would go to one location and then, um, the people who were staying for the conference would do that and the rest of us would go home. And we did it in, uh, we did it in, uh, twice in, um, uh, DC, once to Montgomery, uh, uh, that's not what it's called. The new town that Rouse did back 40 years ago.
Yeah.
And then once to see that thing called King Farm, uh, when we all got in the bus and went out to see that. That was our first new urbanist community, actually, Garrett.
That's right.
And, uh.
The point is, as we see these opportunities, be sure and, be sure and bring them up.
I don't think I go to those. It's, it's enlightening to see how.
Well, it is. It's, uh, I've got a whole binder full of photographs from places like that.
Learn a lot at a meeting. You can learn a lot talking to colleagues at a meeting.
Yeah.
But you seem to learn the most actually being on the ground and getting in.
Yeah.
Deep.
Walking around it. We learned, oh goodness, we've learned about liner buildings. Uh, we've been to Hercules, we've been to, um, just all sorts of places like that as they have been, have been developing. It's been fascinating. Okay?
That's my report.
Great. Bob?
Yeah, um, one thing about the, um, 10 lanes of traffic going out to the airport, we have, uh, over 51,000 people working here every day. And the CEOs of some of those companies here in Rancho, they land at the airport at Mather and they're at their company in 10 minutes. So we don't need 10 lanes of traffic, I don't think, to get that done. So we can probably continue with that and we'll see how that goes. Um, since this is our first meeting since the, um, first, uh, meeting we had in, uh, April, um, in case you haven't heard, we had a groundbreaking for the Veterans Village at Mather. Uh, our first, next 50 apartments are going to go in and the, uh, 45 beds on the second story of that building are going to be done. That's phase two. They're going to be using a lot more on that building. But I'm so glad that it's finally in the process of being done. It's something that's great for the veterans and it's something that people learn because we've talked to the people at the, uh, cap to cap and they can't believe that we've been able to do that much because some of them are just trying to get somebody off the street. And they feel like they were successful when they had 20 or 30. And I thought, that's great. You can do anybody, help, help anybody. But when we get this done, um, it's just amazing that, um, people are just shaking their heads. How did you do that? I said, well, you have a lot of cooperation and partnership and that's how it's done. The, um, musical at Cordoba High, um, Little Shop of Horrors, that was great. Uh, we went to that on Thursday. Then they had another, uh, performance on Friday and two performances on Saturday. So they were great. It was just a wonderful thing. And after seeing, um, uh, in the past when my kids are going to Cordoba High, the musicals were done in the little theater. It's a little bit bigger now. And, uh, but the theater is great and they did a wonderful job. And I'm really glad that we have some support for the, um, uh, musicals and for the arts. And it's, just it shakes your head. That's wonderful that we can actually have that. The people in Rancho Cordoba voted, um, a bond in, uh, got enough money sold on it to build the science building. And they passed another bond to build the theater. So, um, my hat's off to everybody in Rancho Cordoba. They voted for, uh, kids. And that was great. Let's see, the, um, cap to cap, we, um, did transportation and we learned a lot on that with the, our elected officials there. And, um, I was able to go with, uh, Donald on another meeting with the Veteran Administration. Um, we knock on their door whenever we can. And, um, Donald, thank you for that, uh, getting me in, uh, in that again, because I was there in March when we were, um, talking about the veterans then also. Um, let's see. It was just kind of ironic that our, um, speaker and the, um, community council luncheon on the 20th of April, just a few days before they were able to arrest a suspect of the East Area Rapist. I thought that was very funny that we had something like that. As a speaker in the community council and then five or six days later, they're doing something as phenomenal as that. So we'll see how that goes. Um, we had the 24th, the Secretary of State Alex Padilla, uh, went to the theater in Cordoba High. And he was there to speak with, uh, the kids there about special visits and the events to encourage civic engagement and, uh, the youth voters, the registration. Kids can register now when they're 16 years old. And when they turn 18, they automatically are registered by the register of voters. So they can vote right then without having to start going back to the register of voters because the age is still 18, but they can register now and put their name in the record when they're 16. And that'll help, I think, a lot if we can get some of the kids to do it now. And, uh, they can have more voters. I just want more people to do that. Um, let's see. Oh, and the, um, planting 15, um, cherry trees here at the Kilgore Cemetery. My, uh, granddaughter, who will be three next month, she decided she was going to help everybody. Um, she helped him and she helped me and then she helped Cyrus. She got a handful of dirt and put it in his shovel. Then he put that in the base of the tree. Then she got another handful of dirt and put it on his shovel again. And it was very interesting to see, she wants to get involved in things. Then she has four older brothers, so she gets involved in things anyway. She's a lot of fun. April the 30th, and the groundbreaking of the, um, California Military Department Consolidated, um, Headquarters Complex. Now that's in the, um, um, let's see, 10601 Bear Hollow Drive in the, uh, Veterans Village, uh, neighborhood. It's, um, Stone Creek, but it's something they've been waiting on and trying to get done for six or eight years, something like that. And that's finally being done. So there were some generals there, there were some all kinds of people, but it was really great that we're going to have that done in Rancho Cordoba. It's very close to the, uh, to Mather. And, uh, but it's only right that they would have that here in Rancho Cordoba since we're a, uh, military town for all intents and purposes. Um, let's see, I think that's about it, what I have. But it's just been, um, great having all of the things that, um, we've been able to do in, in our city. And I'm waiting for the, um, numbers from the, um, state border equalization to see how many people we have in Rancho Cordoba this year.
Thank you, Bob. So, um, I know you're all getting the picture of the fact that, uh, uh, there have been so many groundbreakings and, um, activities and, um, ribbon cuttings and just such a variety of things go on that, that you really have to have a list in order to, in order to, um, keep track of all of them. Um, my, I, in, in Washington, I had the opportunity to serve on two different committees. And the highlight was probably, um, taking, uh, the, uh, some farm to fork people, restaurateurs, a couple of, uh, uh, owners of wineries, um, people like that to visit with the Secretary of Agriculture, whom I just happened to have gone to junior and senior high school with. So, um, that it's, I haven't seen him since a high school reunion and it's very nice to be able to catch up with people like that. Um, Bob's correct. A bunch of us went over to Cordoba High to meet Secretary of Education, Secretary of State, Alex Padilla. And yes, I did take, uh, pre-registration signups to two, to Calvin and to Agnes because they qualify. Um, attended the lovely volunteer lunch at the, uh, Cordoba Recreation Park District at the Senior Center. And, um, I'm always amazed at how, what a, um, how talented the staff at the Senior Center is in terms of coming up with a theme for the luncheon and then decorating their venue so that it's really a special, a special occasion for the volunteers. Um, joined everybody in planting cherry trees at Kilgore. And we have two different cherry trees planted there, two different varieties planted there. So it will extend the blooming season, um, beyond what we have, beyond what we're normally used to. Joined the, um, Police Department, our Assistant Chief at an event downtown called Biggs with Badges. It was an opportunity for big brothers, big sisters to, uh, start a program with the, um, uh, public safety officials around the region. And, uh, with Bob, went to the, and Cyrus, went to the groundbreaking of the California National Guard. They're right at the point where, uh, Stone Creek touches the flight line at Mather. And we had known for several years that they did buy that piece of ground. So it's great to have them break ground. Um, and, and the, um, and General Baldwin, who is the commander, uh, said he thought that they, they were really in the ideal location. And part of it had to do with the 14 or 16 restaurants at Cat Village because they could all walk to lunch every day. Um, we did go over to Abraham Lincoln School to celebrate, uh, an award. And, um, I greeted the, um, SBDC Small Business Development Center here at, uh, at City Hall for a small business, uh, training session, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce partner, Rancho Chamber partnering with the Metro Chamber downtown. Um, County Two by Two, we continue to talk about, uh, a lot of the activity that's taking place out at Mather, actually for the first time since the, since the base closed in 93. Attended a wacky thing called the City Selection Committee, which really doesn't do anything and, and, um, but it's mandated by the state and it has to do with LAFCO. And nobody there knew what they were there for, but it turns out that we are required to meet. It's just that the last time, uh, the committee met, it was 2010, which shows you how very important it is. And.
I was at that meeting.
So was I. And.
Didn't we, don't we have a fixed rotation in place?
Uh, yeah, for, for LAFCO.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, um, the interesting thing about this committee, uh, nobody has reviewed its operating rules since 1970. So we decided maybe we should review the operating rules and see whether they even actually relate to what we think we're supposed to be doing this year. So if we meet again this year, then that will be on the agenda. Um, I did attend the open house at, uh, George Washington Carver High School. And it, Carver is really, it's sort of a hidden gem. It is a beautiful campus. They have now actually been out there 10 years. They have very unique programs and they are, we actually have city staff, um, who have, whose children go there and are extremely happy. They're a very creative group of people and a very creative, um, very creative high school. Um, I wonder what this one says. I can't read my own handwriting. And then this morning, uh, David and I went to the SPTC JPA, which is the rail corridor that goes from 65th Street all the way up to Placerville. And, um, I did a report for you guys and, um, and for regional transit and, um, sent that to you earlier today. They're, they're planning a trail from, or they are, there is a trail. It's a, uh, partly rails and partly trails that goes from, uh, the city of Folsom, uh, right at East Bidwell, all the way down the county. And it hits Eldorado County just a little bit south and west of Latrobe and then goes back up to Latrobe. And right now they are running, well, not right now because of the, uh, construction uh, that Folsom has going on south of Highway 50. But when they're able to run trains, they run to Latrobe, uh, once a month in the summertime in order to have a fundraiser pancake breakfast. So you can actually take the train from Folsom to Latrobe and have a pancake breakfast with the, the fine residents in Latrobe. It's very nice. Cyrus?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the things that I have been involved with have already been mentioned. So I wouldn't, uh, belabor the discussion anymore. Uh, the only thing I just wanted to add about the, uh, National Guard Headquarters, it's, uh, going to house over 700 employees and it, the building will also be a gold lead certified. So this is definitely a great improvement to our community and look forward to seeing that. And, and the only other comment I wanted to make with the upcoming of the summertime and the construction season, you will see some construction activities throughout the city. And as, any construction activity will create some inconveniences. Folsom Boulevard, we are going to, uh, start on the next phase of improvements on Folsom Boulevard. That's set to start fairly soon. And we will also expect to see closure of Douglas Road, uh, in, and the east part of our city, uh, possibly in June. So that would, starting in June, so that will, uh, definitely create some inconvenience to the public. And we, uh, ask that you bear with us and, and think about the improvements that will come after that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus. Um, actually, we should mention that the, um, uh, for those, uh, that it might apply to, the National Guard complex actually will also include a, uh, a separate building for, um, uh, National Guard members and retirees, uh, for a variety of services. And they're, the National Guard's really very proud of that because it will give them one location where they can go to sign up for benefits or, um, get their questions answered about benefits or taxes or whatever. about benefits or taxes or whatever, whatever the question may be. So they are justifiably proud of that one.
One thing too, Cyrus, there is a, when the Douglas Road is closed, there's still going to be a way for people to use that to get to Grant Line.
Yeah.
There would be some access for, definitely access for, full-time access for residents. There would be a portion of the road that would be closed to, through traffic for, for up to six months potentially.
And the result at the end will be a water line so that new construction can continue to take place.
That's correct.
So we are moving into the consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are deemed routine and can be approved with one motion unless there is somebody signed up to speak to anything between 13.1 and 13.8 or if there is a council member who wants to pull an item from the agenda and have us, have some questions answered. So do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Not for these items.
Okay. Does anybody want to pull an item?
I'd like to pull 13.5.
13.5, okay. So we'll entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
All the ones from 13.1, 13.4, and 13.6 to 13.7 for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All this in favor? No, I'm sorry, call the roll, please. Stacy.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Thank you.
So would you read 13.5 into the record, please?
The subject of 13.5, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendment number 47-2015-2 for stormwater engineering services with Unico Engineering, Inc., to extend the contract term from Jan, I'm sorry, from June 30th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 that results in increasing the contract amount from $325,000 to a not to succeed, not to exceed amount of $425,000.
And your question? Do you need Albert? Albert, thank you. And your question?
Albert, I wanted to bring up the, with the group, the question that since, I don't know if everyone realizes, but there's a new state law that's going to make us retain 50% water at, you know, all the new developments that are basically before it can get in there. And it's a huge issue that's, that's going on right now. And I want to know if the, this group was basically going to help us to hopefully start to protect us from all the, the bad things that are getting ready to happen or hard, hardships that are going to be put on the communities that are trying to do development.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and Councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And Unico Engineering is hired as expert consultant help to assist city staff in implementing the requirements that are placed on the city by the state and the federal government. And among those are the low-impact development requirements that you mentioned.
That's my only question. I'm just trying to bring up the fact that, that we have to do something and we have to address this because it's going, we have three or four big developers that are trying to push business development through before this goes into action because of how hardship they're going to feel with this new type of regulation that the state's putting on.
When you, that is one of the things about travel, when you, when you travel around and you see other, you see cities in other states where they've had requirements like this for quite some time, it really does change the landscape a little bit. But, but the benefit is addition of open space that wouldn't necessarily be there if, if it were not a requirement to retain. Because you typically are doing it with detention basins, retention basins, that kind of thing. So, thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
So...
I'd like to move...
Great.
13.5?
Super. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you very much. Okay, consent public hearing items. We have five public hearing items, five consent public hearing items, which again are somewhat routine and can be taken all in one motion. Do we have anybody signed up to speak to these?
We do not.
Okay. So I'm going to open the public hearing on items 14.1 through 14.5 and ask if any of the council members wish to discuss any of these items. Seeing none, we'll, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll entertain a motion.
Move the calendar.
One second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Those five items carry. And now we will return to the Community Enhancement Fund. And we are at the top of page three.
Mayor, just for the record, we're returning to the special meeting having completed the regular meeting.
Well, actually...
We have one item, right?
We have...
We're in the regular meeting. We have one item after this.
Yeah, this is 16.1. So when we finish this, then we will do 16.2.
We can go, continue as the regular item because it is on the agenda.
It is on both, excuse me.
Right, yeah. Super. Okay. Stacy.
Good evening, as opposed to good afternoon. And I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst. We are back on page three of the staff recommendation list. The first item on page three is application number 61. That item has already been discussed and voted on as of April 24th. So the next item up on page three is application 62.
Okay, so gentlemen, do we have any need to discuss 62, 70, or...
The last one is also already approved, so you do not need to discuss the art arc. It was approved last year as a two-year agreement.
Okay.
Did we get clarity on 62? I remember there was a $3,000 issue, but there's also a new band or an additional band?
So the original staff recommendation on page three, item 62, was $8,000 per fiscal year and we have increased it to $13,000 per fiscal year for both 18, 19, 19, 20, as well as 20, 21. So we have shown an increase of $5,000 for the Rancho Cordova swing band.
So, so a vote to support this would be for all three years?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking for today? Okay. The only thing I would ask the city manager and staff in general to look at with these things is, I don't know if we, we set that aside, obviously it's going to be set aside because we've already kind of spent it in prior years, but I do remember getting advice from council at some, or from the city attorney at some point that we couldn't encumber future general fund obligations in out years. I don't, I don't know if we're running into a risk here when we do that, but that would be helpful. But also for some of these things that are kind of more ongoing, and we've kind of talked about this, even like CBG funding and other things like that, that ongoing costs shouldn't necessarily be here every year. And I don't know if that's a transfer of some of these funds into the general fund and say, this is something that we're going to continue to fund for the next 20 years. It's like the MAC is something that we probably go along with, that other nonprofit that I can't talk about in the community council, where they're, they're in the general fund in some way, that we know that this is something that's just a normal expenditure that we're going to be spending.
Well, we did, we did transfer the MAC to the general fund, the maintenance for the MAC to the general fund.
But there's a hundred and something thousand in this year's.
No, but we transferred the maintenance.
That's what I'm saying. The ongoing program, I mean, if we're going to continue to have programs there, it's going to cost money. So again, I, I don't want to get into the weeds as far as where we move it. I'm just saying from a cautionary standpoint, these things that we're saying, we're, we're probably not going to stop anytime soon, we should probably figure out a way to take those out of the annual discussion, is what I'm trying to say.
I think the only comment I would like to make, the adding those or taking those from the, from the general fund would be very difficult without infusion of measured age funding.
And that's exactly what I'm suggesting. I'm saying if, I guess we need to start treating the things, so Promise Program at some point is probably a good conversation to have, just moving those to a place where they're being treated like the other organizations that we treat that way, that are going to have, that we, we know we're not going to, we're not closing the MAC anytime soon. That's probably got to move, be moved over just like two other ones that we have.
Okay, so that really is a different conversation.
I'm bringing it up because of this item, so no, it's not.
Right, no, but the whole intent with the Community Enhancement Fund has been to keep that separate from the general fund so that there's never any question about...
That's true, but again, I'm bringing up here is, this is a basically three years out of funding. Are we going to treat the Promise Program like that? Are we going to treat some other ones like that? If we are, we should be treating them different in this process. Because it's, it is, it's contrary to what we've said we're doing in this process. So I would say if we start to choose those ones out of here that we're going to do that to, we should take them out of this process by next year. Just something to think about.
Okay. So any questions about 62 or 70? Stacy, do we have anybody signed up to speak to either one of those?
No, we do not.
Okay. So we're agreed on page three.
Have we, have we had anyone come for 70? Not at the last meeting or this meeting?
Well, it says they're not actually a property owner.
She's come in and spoken to staff, but I don't believe she's attended the night meetings.
What would the $30,000 be for?
It would to fund, it would fund performances that the Hummingbird Theater Company would put on. And it would cover things such as the rehearsal space that they would need, the performance space, any royalties and rights that they would need for music, costumes, props, lightings, et cetera.
Could we just put this into a fund around, I mean, we already had the theater company that I know that Garrett can't talk about, could we just make some sort of fund that's performing arts related and let staff work it out later? This just seems kind of arbitrary to do it now. I mean, you had a quarter of a million dollar ask and we're saying, here's 30 grand, see what you can do with it?
In fact, we may have to do something like this because we, in some of the prior items, we've already gone above the staff recommendations, so something else has to be adjusted. So this may be one of those areas that we could make some adjustments.
Yeah, maybe just, we have $50,000 for public art right now?
Yes.
And we've funded 13, 16 grand for the theater?
I believe the suggestion was to keep the theater project separate from public art is what I heard during the first session.
Right, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is make another, another fund that's, that's performing arts related. So we have, public art have a performing arts fund that staff, so, I don't know, 25,000? And see what they can do with that? And then revisit it next year?
Recognizing that the council has already approved the $12,340 on the prior item.
Yeah, that would come out of that and then you could work out the rest of this with Since they haven't been here, have you guys been to this?
No, never heard of it before.
They've done one production, as I recall, in Capitol Village Park.
And they have another production starting, I believe, May 11th through the 26th at the MAC.
It's definitely in our interest to promote art in Rancho Cordova, including performance art, but this is not necessarily the most strategic way to do that.
Well, and again, most of the artworks as we started were haphazard. So I, I would, I would start there, see what the opportunity is and their capacity to do something. So we funded one part of it, add 10 grand to it and then just see if that's enough and if it doesn't work. I mean, they've done one performance without us at all.
Would that be changing the whole thing though in the thing that we're doing in our, in measured age money? Because we have it set up and it's already been approved once. I'm just asking because it, is this going to change it? Is this going to make it more difficult to make things change as you go every year like this?
No, I think in this specific case, we, we will be asking you, since you've gone over on some items, what else we need to reduce. So this could be one area that we could help, that could actually help with reducing the budget.
I think it would be really helpful if we stick with the structure that we have in place currently. And then at another point in time, if we want to change the structure that we've been using to, to categorize things or to fund things, then we can have that discussion. But when we, when we sort of get off track in terms of what we want to do with projects, similar projects in a different year, then it diverts our attention from what we're trying to do, which is motor through this list and get to the bottom where...
I respectfully disagree. I think I'm doing the exact opposite of what you're suggesting. I'm saying instead of keep muddling around with these, create a fund and let staff figure it out later.
Okay. Are we good on page three, everybody?
No, I would create a fund that's 25 to $30,000 and let staff figure out performing arts related items.
So Donald, I would agree with that strategy. I don't, I don't want to really be picking here and deciding which play we're going to produce next year. Not, not good at the dais, right? It's like choosing paint colors. We don't want to do that. But I would recommend that rather than just have staff do it, we probably involve the art community in Rancho Cordova in that decision. So sort of like the Art in Public Spaces Fund, that's probably not an engineering decision, how we spend that, right? It's probably not an economic development decision. It's probably best rest with, you know, artists and art community. Let, let the experts steer us as much as possible there.
I think last year we suggested that for performing arts. I just don't think it ever happened.
I think you're right.
Well, performing arts also includes music.
Sure.
Right.
And we have several music items in here.
And in past years, we had a fund for music, for schools.
But in, but in, but what we've done is put them all under one heading. And so if we start, staff's gone to enough trouble to try to chart these things so that we've all got something to look at. And if we start pulling something out and say, sticking it over here, then we're really sending staff back to square one to figure out where everything belongs.
I think we've done it a handful of times with field trips and a lot of other things so that we don't get into the weeds.
Okay, well, let's decide what we want to do with page three.
Well, right now I'm going on past page three and approving it as is.
I'd probably say create a $30,000 fund and take the previously promoted theater project out of it, leaving the rest for other performance art.
That's two of us. Let's move 70 out.
What?
Pull 70, move the 30,000 into the fund and pull 70 out, right? That's three of us.
All right, so it's 70 and CC2.
Right. And potentially any other performing...
And others.
Yeah. And the fund amount is 30,000, just want to be clear.
That's what we said.
Does that work if you include the, the CC2 on page one? All the music?
I'm not saying music, I'm saying just these performing arts.
Well, performing arts includes music.
I can say theater.
Okay, theater.
We do have music funding elsewhere.
But we've also created a fund for schools for music programs in the past. And gardens and others.
Performing arts.
So it sounds like we're going to add performing arts theater fund at an amount of $30,000. And a subset of that would be page one, CC2, the 12,430.
Yep. And Hummingbird could apply if they can do something for what's left.
With the remainder. On page four, we did discuss item, application number six on the April 24th work session. At that time, it was agreed that that item would not move forward since some of the aspects of the application were religious in nature or for a private group. since some of the aspects of the application were religious in nature or for a private group. And then the other items that they were asking for were also specified in other individuals' applications. So I don't believe any further discussion is needed on that unless there's somebody who's pulled a comment card. Mayor Budge, I do have someone who has submitted a speaker card for this item.
Okay.
Which one?
Application six on page four.
We really already did vote on it.
So, so just a point of Brian Act clarification, if it's helpful to the council. This is the second night in exactly the same process that you engaged in in the council workshop at your prior meeting. And you are not required to take public testimony on the exact same topics repeatedly, where you address the same topic exactly, with no additional information or no modification from the council or no proposed addition. So the council has a choice. The council has the right here to ask the public, to tell the public that you've, you've already had the opportunity to speak on this precise item. And here, you've already given your indication of how you will be taking action. But you do have the ability to entertain their comments if you wish to. On the items where you haven't already indicated how you're going to be voting, the council's still debating. And the council would still be possibly offering views and insights to which the public would want to have the opportunity to respond.
Okay, then we're going to say thank you very much, but we did vote on this. Okay, what about 28 and 63? Where we've also.
Mr. Hawke, is it?
Voted.
Shelley, do you want to comment on 63?
The application is really self-sufficient, I think. I don't have anything to add to it.
Okay, so she said the application is self-sufficient, and there isn't anything else to add?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what happens to the, not quite sure what happens to the event with that reduction.
I don't want to reduce the Fourth of July parade.
I don't know if the community council board has to make up that gap, or if that's a deal color, that's what I don't know.
I'm not interested in dropping the, lowering the amount of the Fourth of July parade.
Can I clarify something?
It isn't the parade.
It's the projects that would fund the corporate, community council expense.
Shelley?
Wait, can I?
Yeah, come and talk about the fact that it isn't the parade itself.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Because I keep hearing "cut." I'm reading over on the right that 20,000 is what we gave last year.
Correct.
That is correct. Well, right around that 20,000 mark.
It's for the Fourth of July parade that'll be taking place in about six weeks.
Oh, gosh.
That one's already funded. She's looking for funding for the 2019 parade.
And so we funded 20,000 this year?
Correct. And that really is only covering the amount of, for prizes, et cetera, to fund the youth band competition, which we feel needs a few more years to catch on. There is a funding issue for the parade itself, but we're going to work on that.
So what is the additional above the $14,000?
The 20,000 just only covers the cost of giving out prizes. We don't have enough staff to do everything, so we will be hiring a consultant to help us execute the parade, because we really got our hands full. And that, and so that we were looking for additional funding to help us with that funding as well, while we take on the parade as we move forward over the years.
And not to belabor my previous point, is there a reason we don't put this into your contract? Because we have Fourth of July in your normal contract.
Right, we, correct. This was a new item that was added to our Cordova Community Council project list last year. It is a big expense to put on a parade. I'm sure you're going to hear the same thing from Jerry Jewell later. But we are, we think we've got capacity. We're going to make it happen. But when this opportunity to continue the enhancement to the parade, which is this, there's quite a bit involved in having this extra competition, there is a cost to that, that we were hoping the city would continue as an enhancement to the parade.
So yeah, I would be in support at the level that's being suggested. I just, I'd rather have it part of, I wouldn't want this in Measure H going forward, especially considering the success that it's been. Again, you coming back hat in hand each year, when, again, we treat you differently than a lot of other organizations, on purpose. That somehow we need to figure out how this is a general fund conversation.
And we're adding something. We believe we will build the capacity to pay for things over time, but it can't happen overnight.
And I'll tell you, I don't know if you're just going to go find a bunch of private dollars to pay out that part of it.
Not immediately, but over time, we probably are able to do that.
You're more optimistic than me, I guess. But I would just say, I'm definitely in support of it. I just, again, maybe it's plucking it from Measure H and putting it into your contract. But, I mean, these are all still general fund dollars we're talking about.
We asked for that allocation, because that's what we think we need. But we're not going to say, we're not going to do it if we don't get it. That's, I guess, my point.
Thank you.
Okay, so I do need to ask a question, though, because one of the, I don't know, column benchmarks in the applications has to do with not just funding something to hire people.
Right.
And you were talking about hiring a consultant?
Well, we do need extra help. It's just a body, it is a body problem at this point. We just have just X number of, X amount of capacity.
Sure, everybody knows you do remarkable things with only three people.
Yes, so, you know, there is, I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat that at all. That is a real need as we, you know, bring this into the programs that we do over the course of a year. It's just going to take us a while to figure it out. This is really the first year that we are in charge of the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Parade, coming up in a few weeks.
Okay, and so, thank you. So Stacy, remind us what the green ones are?
Yes, so when council gave direction to staff at the April 24th work session, one of the things that staff heard was that you were interested in kind of grouping some of these items together that had to do with community reinvestment or engagement efforts. And that could be things such as a community or cultural event. So those smaller-scale events, our recommendation is to fund them out of the micro grant program, which is a component of one of the economic development and community development initiatives on a later page. So the recommendation for page four, items 10 and 47, is to fund them, if council agrees, but out of the micro grant program, as opposed to the arts bucket.
So my thought process always with micro grants were for small neighborhood block parties or some sort of small planting, not planting trees, I guess, because we're doing that in a different way. So I know in past years, we've had like a field trip fund, we've had an assemblies fund for schools, we've had a music fund, we've had a community gardens fund, or a school gardens fund. Are we not planning on doing a field trip and assembly fund this year? Has that not been proposed? Again, maybe, did I not, did I miss it?
Council hasn't proposed it yet, but it could be a council initiative.
So I, and again, I can't remember how much we did for that, but I would think something along the lines of field trips and assemblies. And again, let staff figure it out over the year, which Stacy's done a great job over the last year. I know we had college visits last year that we tried to fund. So, again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying let's fund the McGarvey Sunrise one right now, but come up with some sort of bucket that schools, that, as the year goes on. Because, okay, Sunrise and McGarvey was noticed at the right time so that they could ask for an assembly. It doesn't really fit with this, but are we saying we're not going to keep funding? I know we did FEYAR the first year. Last year, we allowed schools to just pick what it was. And each school basically picked for every grade. And we funded, I don't even know how many assemblies, but a ton of them, right?
There were a lot, yes.
I won't ask you a number. So it just kind of begs the question that, so, the community events? I think the faith-based organizations put aside 25,000 or something. And again, we could do some smaller grants to support those events. And then field trips and assemblies?
Number 10, I don't feel is an assembly. It's really a fair or an event that the two schools are wanting to put on together to promote the multicultural diversity of the neighborhood.
That's true, actually. Yeah, so I guess, I guess, that would fit as a micro grant, you think, Loriann? Okay, she's not here, I trust Loriann.
I did speak to Loriann before we made these recommendations.
Well, at some point, before we finish this, we should talk about if we want another field trip, assemblies, school garden fund. Because those have been things that we've been consistent with, the last three years at least. And they've been extremely popular.
Well, the general comment we've been, I'm sorry.
No, Stacy actually has a section on council initiatives. And there's a memo that we got that includes that. And so Stacy, you want to.
I assumed that was in here somewhere, I just, I just.
Stacy, you want to discuss that at some point, don't you?
Yes, I was going to discuss it once we made it through our 20 pages.
Great.
That we're on page four of.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so, are we good with page four?
Yep.
Are we not going to fund, can we not raise it to 34? Is there no way to actually do that, to help out the Cordova Community Council?
Well, that's for next, that's for next year. So they have 20,000 for this year already.
Yeah, I think my, my suggestion of direction to staff is, leave this number the way it is for this. But I think you heard a collective, we want to figure out how to put it into your contract, into the contract with the community council. Which could mean taking it out of Measure H. Is that?
Yeah, she shouldn't have to come back hat in hand every year. This is an amazing part of our city, and this should be in there.
Okay.
I think that would be fine. My only reminder is that this is what the council did not want us to do when we started on the Measure H program. They, you asked us to specifically set aside the funding, separate from general fund. And if we make the lines where a little blurry, then we may find ourselves in three or four years that we only have about $3 million to work with, not the $8 million that we have. But this way, you have the ability to judge the, basically, the effectiveness or the value of the programs year by year.
Yes.
I think, and honestly, I was one of the first ones to suggest that, Cyrus. But I will say that there, there are things that merit that. I mean, you know, the Promise Program, again, is something that I think to add stability to the, to the Community College District, like, at some point, we should come up with a five-year plan for that, and what that would look like. There's a couple of those that are just never going to self-fund themselves. And again, I love Shelley's optimism. I don't think we're going to find a bunch of awards for bands. I just, I don't know who the big donor out there that's going to start funding marching bands is, if we don't do it.
Because I often see discussions and presentations at other city councils or counties that the staff presentation starts, well, we have a $10 million budget, but everything has been spoken for, we're talking about $100,000. This is not where we want to find ourselves in five years. That's the only word of caution.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, moving on to page five. The two green ones are micro grant projects.
That is the recommendation. So for page five, application 72, it is suggested that it be a micro grant at the amount that they requested, which is $1,700. And then for page five, item five, the recommendation is to support the funding specifically designated for the safety and the security at the event, for an amount not to exceed 5,000.
So that's police presence at the event? Is that what we're talking about?
Or private security, whatever they need.
You're talking about item five?
Correct.
Oh, I get it, okay. Over here on the, I'm sorry, I'm not reading the right column. Okay.
And that would come out of the economic development, micro grant, or the community development?
I think, I think they're broad.
It would be broadened.
Yeah, the broad concept is that we establish a fund and let, and allow staff to work directly with these organizations, could be, which could be a variety of organizations. They could be faith-based, or they could be private organizations, or even individuals to work on the execution of the program. I don't think it's appropriate for the council to get involved in that level. I think the broad concept is to create that fund and identify the, what is, what's the cap? The ceiling for the funding that we want to provide in those funds.
And you have 82,000 set aside, is what I'm looking at, right?
We need to figure, yeah.
Right, that's the current recommendation.
Right. And the reason we came up with the $5,000 recommendation for this specific program was based on our direct conversations with the pastor of the church, because there are some specific activities that are truly religious in nature. This is the one activity that is mostly based on the community aspect of it and the specific need that they have.
I think traditional, traditional definitions of a micro grant in the US are like 2,000. So this is also stretching that a bit.
Yeah, maybe we shouldn't just call it micro grant. Maybe we just call it something else that has an appropriate definition. But it's the concept of creating a separate umbrella fund that we could cover all of those.
So, I mean, I'm just going to jump right in. When we first left, we agreed, or I thought we were on the same opinion, that we were going to fund the churches at the value that they had brought in. And then we were going to see at the end, once we put that grant together. Then I heard that we, then I thought we were going to take all that money and put it in a group fund, and then we were going to allow you to work with the Cordova Community Council to set up a group to aid to fund these groups. This, these groups, and let me make sure I say the right things. I am a member of River City Christian. I believe in mission. I'm also a member of St. Mel's and a couple of the churches in the area. These groups do amazing work. These are not, these events are not held to prophetize, they're held to engage the community. And so I think they're doing amazing things in the city. I thought we were going to take the funding and not try to undercut them and put them down to something that's not usable. I wanted to fund them at the full amount, and I thought that we had talked about funding them at the full amount. Are we not, are we not? And then we were going to look at the end and say, okay, we don't want to, because of separation of church and state and the lawyer, we were going to take the total amount of this group and put it in a lump sum so that them, the Telagon event and other events that are technically semi-faith-based, semi-cultural-based, we're going to be able to go to that and work with the city to be able to get fully funding. And so what you said is that now I need, so, I want to, I want to be able to give these guys money that's going to help them affect thousands of members in our community. Not hundreds, thousands of people are affected by these events in a good way. And that's the whole point of these Measure H funds, and not to prophetize. And so, what, zero and 5,000 bucks, and then to totally cut the thing down to nothing for crossover basketball, doesn't work. So how, like, I thought we were in agreement, because there was three of us that basically said that we wanted to fund this. How do I, what's the right way to make sure that we fund these groups? You said that you need to, do we not, as a council, want to fund this church and the work it's doing? Or how do we want to, I mean, like, we were going to put the big fund and make sure that we said this is for them.
Okay, Garrett, it isn't, it isn't, it's not just that, all right? All of these, or not all of these, but many of these events that are going into the category that Cyrus proposed last time have an attraction far beyond Rancho Cordova. So you can't just say that it's all these people in our community. Telon Gona draws from the entire region and as far away as the Bay Area. A community egg hunt, River City Christians got 7,000 people, just like St. John Vianney. I mean, I've, I've got a good friend who, who's a retired Air Force general, and she comes from Citrus Heights to come down to church here in Rancho Cordova. You know, I mean, they really have a reach far beyond the city. But, so, it's not, it's not fair to just characterize it as only Rancho Cordova. But then, when you talk about the basketball, the basketball's a completely different activity. Because if you'll remember from the discussion last time, it was very confusing as to how many basketball programs there were, and who was putting them on. And two of them were called crossover. So ultimately, in the end, we decided not to fund number 26, because not, because the majority of us didn't even know this was happening. And if, you know, it just, we know where there are two other Easter egg hunts. We just never heard of this one. So for something to, to say, you know, to grow it, we'd like to know more about it or have, have somebody know that it happens. So, I mean, it's really, it's like three different conversations. But you're right, he, Cyrus suggested a fund that. that, that could host these particular kinds of activities. And if you don't want to call it micro grant, he'll come up with a different name. But we did discuss number 26 before. And we voted on it.
Right, and we all voted yes.
And this is a...
On, that's what, because that's what, I'm sorry, David, I recorded it and I watched it just to make sure it went yes, 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 that we were going to fund it. And so then I come back and it's zero. So I, at this point, I just want to know, I mean, I want to fund, is it something along the lines, we need to take a vote that we're going to fund this as a group and say, okay, what are we doing about number, I would like to fund it at the full amount? And then what's, and then we take a vote. And then I would like to fund the River, the River City Christian Community Egg Hunt at the full amount. And do we have to take fund? And yes, I understand that, that I have known about it. There's thousands of members that come to it, and they're, and these are people that walk over from Rancho Cordova. This is, this is stuff that we do. So, I mean, that, that's, that's where I'm at with this whole thing. I mean, it, the amazing amount of work and goodwill that we're doing at Rancho, not to mention the Christmas mall is something where we go get the veterans out of our community and bring them in so they can go buy gifts. These poor guys that wouldn't have a chance in the world. And I want to encourage that kind of good behavior in our city.
Do we really spend $11,000 on eggs?
And Linda, that's, that's my question, is that these events have been happening, and then it just seems like somebody learned about Measure H and goes, I should ask for this for now, when a lot of these groups, I, I don't know, it, in scale to other things that we're funding, it seems, I mean, a little off to me. I, I don't know. I'd, I'd rather have this as something that, that staff can work out with the warnings that we've already gotten about the legalities of this and what we can, I mean, we've already had the Flying Spaghetti Monster Man in here lecturing us about our prayer at, before, before city council meetings. There's reliability there. There's a very active organization in Elk Grove that goes around suing lots of local governments, including ones that I've served on, not this one, or maybe they did before I was here. So I, I would, I would err on the side of caution and make a fund and allow staff to, and that's what I said last time. So I don't recall voting yes on any of these. Not to say I'm, I'm opposed to them, but then again, you, you have some very large organizations that are putting on very large events that this seems out of character for how much we're funding other organizations for very similar events. We sponsor stuff every once in a while, but we rarely do underwriting of events like that.
Mayor? I didn't have the opportunity to, to be in person with you at the last meeting. So I just want to personally from my office clarify things. First, I know that a lot of your discussion about these items focused on completely non-legal points, other points having to do with the criteria. And I think that the, the first conversation, the first iteration of the, the document you got and its focus on some of the legal issues was really the result of staff's analysis being confined to a, a two-inch by one-inch box. And I think that that point has been well clarified. The second is that in, in the meetings that the city manager and I had with, with certain religious organizations that have applied for grants, we said to them what I would just say again publicly here, which is that we absolutely recognize and appreciate as your staff that the faith community here is, is an absolutely vital community and civic partner, an absolutely vital part of the history and an absolutely vital part of the future of, of the community. That's at least been the, the standing instructions that I think that we've understood through, through my tenure as your city attorney and before. And, and I would just restate what I'm sure came across at the last conversation was that there are an incredibly large number of potential opportunities for the city to legally collaborate with, and in some cases even fund projects by the faith community and other community participants without having any legal issues whatsoever. So there are, if the city manager receives applications for, for projects within the micro grant program, and some of those projects are from the faith community, our office will absolutely not have any prohibition against considering those applications and, and processing them. And there are certain constitutional constraints, but those constitutional constraints do not prohibit a very active partnership with and collaboration with, with the faith community and others who would serve the city of Rancho Cordova and its public.
Mayor Budge, I do have a speaker card for one of these two items.
72 or 3, or 5?
72.
Okay.
Is Anil?
Anil.
Anil, are you still here?
No, he had to go.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we good with page five?
We do, we do need some verification from, from the council. So staff recommendation is to create a, a fund, an umbrella fund. Is that what the council approving?
Is this AD1 on page 20? $400,000?
What's page 20?
I'm trying to figure out where this fund is listed, and I can't...
It's page 19.
Five, the 82 grant.
Page 19, ED5.
And my concern, my concern about putting it there is that those funds have been set aside for a lot of neighborhood projects, small, teeny neighborhood projects and small little block parties and things like that. And these faith events would eat up all of that.
They would.
So, and again, I, I would just reiterate it. If, if we had the faith community wanted, came to us and said, we want to grow the heart shelter larger, or we want to offer homeless services or something else like that, I would entertain that in a totally different way than the way funding these large community events that they've been putting on for years. One thing looks different to me than the other. The one sponsoring an event, the other one is underwriting social service of some sort that they're doing? You know, that, to me, that's what I would have rather seen.
The way I would comment on that is, is similar, but a little different. I think if they were, if they had clarified that this was something new, kind, kind of like the, I don't know what page it is now, but the crossover basketball one was an extension of the program to middle school from where it currently is in high school, I think. Yes, so the expansion of the program to include a middle school league. So that's like an add-on to something they're already doing based on their proven experience. That's, that's sort of one category. Saying, here's our existing event, can you fund part of it, is, does feel a little different.
Absolutely.
But how you, but how you tap into this strength that Garrett's identified and that I agree with is the challenge. So if it's 82,000, that's coming in the same category as beautification, chain link, fence buyback, drought tolerant landscaping, micro grants, dead trees, stump removal, community and cultural events and other projects.
So some of those micro grants, I'll give you an example. It Takes a Lincoln Village used it for their national night out to pay for ice cream and a band, right?
Perfect.
Well, that's a micro grant. I'm, I'm just concerned that not to exceed five grand and an egg hunt's asking for 17 grand, and they take $5,000 of that for a sponsorship. That, I don't know if that's the point of that fund. So when we were talking last time was some sort of faith, faith-based community fund. And I know David's been talking to the faith community about, I think it's called Jubilee, right? Was the after-school program in Belleville?
Yeah.
At some point, trying to do something around that where they got volunteered. So it's not that we don't want to find things to work with the faith community. I just, I don't know if these are the, the veteran, the veteran one sounds very interesting. But just doing an egg hunt, I don't...
I just, no, $11,000 to fund an Easter egg hunt just doesn't seem logical. I agree with you.
But tapping into the energy that exists there, which is why we got to that community council or faith council sort of recommendation.
Right.
You know, same, sort of the same thing we did with the artists, right? The artists came to us and said, form this thing and fund us. And we said, go organize yourselves over there and do something small and then talk to them.
Well, and come up with parameters, and then we say, here's how much we could give you for that. And then let, because, I mean, we have a church that's asking for certain things. There might be 10 other churches that if they knew that they were eligible to tap into some resources, might compete very well with some of these other larger organizations.
And we've had a lot of unanticipated benefits from that arts collaboration that we fostered.
Well, and look what the faith community did with art, right? That was them coming together and saying, we've got homeless people from the river in Rancho knocking on our door, and we're saying, and they're saying, sorry, you have to go to Richard Boulevard if you want to come here. So then they said, forget it, we're going to do it ourselves. And we funded them like 13 grand to do that, and they do the rest of it themselves.
I think if we get the faith community together, I would call it a faith council. I would make it part of a community council, you know, outreach efforts. Add it the way art has been done there.
So we're giving Shelley more things to do.
That's exactly right.
Well, we're, we're going to work on, on cloning, cloning.
But it separates it.
I thought that's what originally we were going to do. That was the vote we actually said. We were going to add up all these numbers, including the Onkali event and the other ones that we agreed to fund, because technically they phase right between the lines of being safe and unsafe. And we were going to put them in a fund, and we're going to give it to Shelley, and that's, and then we were going to hands-off it, which was going to keep us safe. But we still are funding some of the other groups that are somewhere in between, and then we've cut out these other groups. And, and, and I, I mean, I'm a little confused now, because I thought we were funding these fully, and then we were just going to say, like, look, it's a big fund, our hands off, go. And now, now we're only giving them like five grand and, and nothing for the crossover basketball, and the Christmas mall gets a little pent. And, you know, this isn't the whole amount that, to throw the event in total. This is the amount they're coming to the city council to ask for. So don't think the whole event's just $11,000, and there's hundreds of people there, and they do many egg hunts. So they spread it out multiple times. So it's not like there's just, like, you got, like, it's three hours of events, and it's not just egg hunts. And Shelley knows running events like this, it takes thousands of dollars. And yeah, they, they want to make it bigger, and they want to help out the community, and they want to bring more people in and show how amazing Rancho is. So I wanted to take all these numbers, and of course, I needed to see the numbers calculated at the end, and be like, faith-based groups, 120 grand, right? And then we were going to go and do the calc's with the whiteboard scratched out.
You had 82.
Yeah, so, but the 82 is also for little micro grants, and I don't want to take money from the ice cream socials. I thought we were just going to say, this is for this group. And then our job was to figure out how Shelley and Cyrus were going to work together to build the faith-based, they're going to bring, yeah, sorry, Shelley, I know you're going to have to figure that out. They're going to bring, you know, every faith-based group into one groom and say, like, they're going to figure out some work around. But I wanted to take that money and like put it to the side, you know, and then look at it as a whole, because that way, you know, Cyrus and Adam don't have to eat me.
I think, if I may just add an explanation, probably trying to decide the mechanics of this and the execution of this at this level is probably not something we need to be focusing on. The real focus should be, what's the concept that you want to support? Well, and, and I think the concept is twofold. What are the types of activities that you would like to see enhanced, and what kind of partnerships we're trying to see? I have had discussions with Shelley about engaging the faith-based community in different activities. And I think creating a call, a fund and calling it a church fund or a faith, it's not something that we want to really focus on, because then you would have every other church to come here and say, well, what about me? I think the question here is, what is it that you're trying to accomplish in terms of the events, the programs, and what is our financial capacity for that? And then the mechanics and the execution of this can be handled by staff. Some of it, some of this could be possibly funneled through the Court of the Community Council. Some could be through private organizations, or some could be directly from the city. I think that's a discussion for different date, and once we know the details. I think at this point, the focus should be, what is it that you're trying to accomplish?
And, and I, and Cyrus, I don't think it's bad that we have a ton of churches that are coming to do amazing stuff in the city. So the answer is, if we have a big fund and they all come for it, that's okay. They can go to this new entity that we're creating the same way that RCC, the, the softball league, the other stuff go and, and create this. So that, that shouldn't be a bad, that's a good thing. We want them all coming to, to take some of this money to do good things in our city. I don't care who takes the money as long as they're doing good things in our city. But, I mean, what is the total between the Onkali event, the Festival of Colors, the trunk or treat, the Easter egg hunt, all the groups that are kind of phasing right between the uncovered zone? What's our, what's our lump? What's our net?
Well, if there's one other thing I could just point out that I wouldn't, if we looked at, like, the Encore event, oh, wait, no, no, that's not what I'm thinking of. The Telagona Association. Culture is different than religion. And so some of these grants weren't written very well, and they had some issues at the faith-based level of what they were doing and what they weren't.
Right.
I think one of the issues that, that, that the city attorney's office has warned us about is the, some of these are being held at churches on their site, and there inherently is some concern there legally about whether or not we can do that, which again, is why I'd rather see staff negotiate what those are and make sure that we're falling within the parameters of the law. The other one, some of these are being held at, at schools, and they're strictly cultural events, and we've been funding them since we started doing Measure H. So some of them are not the same as others.
You're completely correct. And again, if you look at, if you assume that there's somewhere around 2,000 people who attend the Telon Ghana event, but then you try to compare that to a basketball team that ultimately has five people on it playing at any one time, and obviously does not have 1,000 people that it benefits, then, you know, again, it's, how, how many people are you reaching with the different programs that are requesting funding?
Well, if we're going off of that, the, the egg hunt does over 2,000. The trunk or treat does, the, the egg hunt does 2,000, the trunk or treat does over 8,000. And if we're just doing off of numbers of people of Rancho Cordova could possibly be affected, also, we also got to be careful.
8,000 people attend the trunk or treat?
Yes.
Their parking lot isn't big enough for that many cars?
What about 8,000 cars?
They, 8,000 people. They walk in from the surrounding areas and create a line that basically circles the entire church, and then they walk through, and then there's festivals, and there's bounce houses, and of course, the, the words weirdest, what's that thing, Ferris wheel, and all that stuff that goes in between. They have thousands of people that they touch on in our city that come to these events, because it's easy for them to walk across, and people know about it. So I, I mean, if we're talking numbers, these events touch more people in Rancho than most of those events. If we're talking like how close we're going to the line, we're edging right really close to faith and cultural, because if you do a blessing, then that's faith. So we're right on that edge. So I, I mean, we have to be, I mean, if we're going to start going down this path, then we have to be really careful about it. But numbers and why these events are amazing about helping out people in Rancho, and I thought that's what Measure H funds were about. It's about basically taking and helping them to make sure these events keep going and growing and doing more good for our city.
My only caution in some of the language that you use, council member among my cautions, is that when you try to define an edge on a constitutional issue such as this, the courts don't allow us to do that with such precision. And we do, we do end up quite possibly in, in a situation where staff is going to be called upon to analyze and possibly to enforce at a very, very, very high level of precision what, what potentially would be occurring. So I think that we're, we're not going to restate the advice that we've given or some of the contours of it, but, but I think thinking of it as an edge that you can go right up to and then is, mischaracterizes the complexity of the constitutional issue for, for people on both sides. So you're, you start to enter into a gray area where, where the question is, is the city, is the city going too far in supporting activities that are primarily or in significant part religious as opposed to, as opposed to communal, and whether or not there are, whether there are lots of other ways... And whether or not there are, whether there are lots of other ways for the city to collaborate with community partners, including the faith-based community, without picking those particular activities?
Okay, so we really lack two pieces of information in order to make an adequate decision tonight on this particular topic. When you consider ED5 and the seven or eight different categories that are, that are housed under there. Number one, we don't know what the total was spent on some of the things like the chain link buyback or I'm not sure we ever removed any dead trees or stumps.
So Mayor Budge, I actually looked that information up because I assumed that might come up. And as of this week, we were at about $20,000 out of the existing $70,000 budget. So.
Just for, just for one fiscal year?
One fiscal year. For everything from chain link fence removal to dead tree stump removal to micro grants, combined, we were at just a little over 20,000.
So what happens if you add community and cultural events?
We still think you're fine at the 82,000 based upon these items being added to at the scope that they're listed. Now, if you add events and that costs 17,000, then of course it wouldn't be sufficient at 82,000.
Yeah, those activities also were sort of in a handoff between an active campaign for chain link fence removal and a, and a less than active campaign for chain link fence removal. So it's sort of a low, I'd say a low activity year. And the other things listed, I think are, I think the thoughts there are that there's a larger campaign that could be done about several things regarding beautification. And that would not have a $20,000 price tag. That would go up again as it became active.
Right. So at this point, we really need to give Cyrus some time to work on this. The question is, what amount of money do you assign to it? And if you throw in all of the cultural activities that have been requested with price tags that do range from 1,700 to 17,000 and 11,000, then you probably get to that 82 real quickly.
And again, I, this is just my two cents. I would much rather entertain social programs or outreach or community service in some way that a faith organization wants to do, whether that's after-school mentoring or reading to kids or anything like that, that came with a cost that they might have than funding holiday parties.
I think at the last meeting, we said this, and Lisa, please correct me if I'm wrong. The applications that were proposed by River City Christian plus the crossover basketball added to about 140,000? Those alone added up to about 140,000?
No.
Am I correct?
Because you remember crossover basketball is two different things. There's the organization like Pepsi. So if someone was selling Pepsi. And then there's River City Christian that's using crossover basketball techniques to do. So that's, there's 60 grand there, I think, was the total asked for River City Christian. And then, but if we're going to add in the other festivals and stuff, it'd be a different number. So what would be that number? Do we, I'm sorry to make you do math on the fly.
No, you're good. In adding up the, the various festivals, such as this, this included the school fair, Encore, the Fourth of July, the trunks, the light parade, the PAL run, we considered that kind of a one-day festival type.
So you're, wait, hang on. You're not answering his question. The faith organization.
She is answering.
But she's saying light parade and festivals.
Very broad.
We're not talking a festival fund. We're talking a faith organization fund.
But, but festivals are a part of this category.
Again, and I, the city manager previously said, you don't want to, this isn't a fund, there should be no pot of money where you say, no one but a faith-based organization can apply. And there should not be any pot of money where you say, no faith-based organization can ever apply.
So if we're talking festivals, we already funded a Fourth of July parade as a festival. So where are we drawing the line on this?
So Lisa, we'd love to know.
She's saying light parade and a bunch of other things.
We'd love to know what the end of that sentence was.
So I also had Hart Fest in there and it's $363,000 has been asked.
Okay, for basic, for a lump sum, for a category that could be called community and cultural festivals.
And let, let me back out one thing there, Mayor. That does have the two crossover basketballs. If I back those out to where we really are looking at more like one-day events, it would be $252,000.
That includes every ask, so even items that we have recommended, no funding for.
Right, and that's fine. That's what we, that's what we were asked. So at this point, that fund is 82,000.
Yeah. I think we're making it almost micromanaging what was micromanaged. And that gets kind of difficult after a while. And what the, our attorney said adds some big questions to that. I know when we first became a city and we had borrowed the fire district's building down there, that was our city manager for a while. But when we got that city manager, one of the first thing that happened was we were sued because the door going into the bathroom wasn't big enough. And that one gentleman who was suing everybody was one of the ones that sued us. And I don't, I think there's some other questions on some of these items that Adam was talking about, gets into that area where we would have some people suing. And maybe the courts, courts would say that we're going into a different area. I want to have a little more clarification, I guess, by Adam, by the staff. And then come back maybe with some of that, and item number on page five. You know, that, that's, I don't know. We're getting, as I said, into micromanaging on some of these things. And it's making it even more difficult. And we're on page five still and it's after eight o'clock. So to take that much time to go through the 20 pages we're going to be doing, we're going to be, have to go into midnight or more. And I don't mind doing that. We've gone two years and two o'clock in the morning in the past. But I think it would be better to get some of these things clarified rather than trying to micromanage anything right now, because it's what's, that's what we're doing.
So we're going to leave, we're going to leave the fund with 82,000.
Can we come back to it and just move on to the other ones? Since we, that way I don't have to keep hushing it. Because I know you have questions and we want to find another way of doing it.
It's, it's a pretty silly fund, in my opinion, right now. The description doesn't pass my laugh test.
Well, and there's ones in there I don't want to fund. Ones we haven't even discussed yet that were mentioned, that if they were a part of that, I wouldn't, I would vote no.
I, I suspect we probably should just set that issue aside for the moment. Go through the others, see if we can clear off some other pages.
Right, and slim it down. That's awesome.
Oh yeah, two big ones here.
So on the top of page six, application 29, I do believe that Mr. Jerry Jewell is in attendance and he was going to provide an update based upon feedback you gave him at the April 24th work session.
Where's your hat?
In the car with about 100 others. Thank you for the time. There's a lot that's happened in the last two weeks and, am I too close to this mic? Somebody yell if I'm, I'm okay. We met with Shelley and Kurt and they were pretty excited about the idea that we were going to build an arts workshop and that if we could expand it to include a more encompassing arts workshop sort of system like the Reno Generator or a arts-based maker space type of thing, that Kurt thought that he could probably spring 20 grand out of economic development. And listening to you talk tonight, and I'm thinking, maybe some of this should come from public art or one of the other arts funds, at least some of it, rather than all from Measure H. Because you do have a pot of money set aside for those and this is arts-related. So that's a decision that you would have to make. I met with, well, back to the arts workshop idea. I didn't sign up for this to be the manager of an all-inclusive arts workshop that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is what they typically are. I signed up to do a parade and I needed support from a warehouse and a place to build floats and have workshops related to that. So I met with M5 Arts downtown at one of their new buildings. They have a new building that's got to be at least 100,000 square feet. And they're paying $2,000 a month. And the city is giving them every concession they can possibly get them to make it a success. And that's the third location for M5 Arts where they're setting up art workspaces and art workshops and doing events for the community. And they are perfectly willing to come and talk to you folks about setting up an arts workshop in Rancho Codoval, assuming that we can find a suitable location with decent leasing arrangements from the owner and there's some funding behind it. And it sounds to me like you guys might have in those other funds, money to talk to them.
Jerry, what is M5 Arts?
They are a big nonprofit that puts on art events and sets up art workshops and art spaces. And they've done a lot of events for Sacramento County and Sacramento City and other organizations, other businesses around everything from big concerts to big art shows. If you remember, Art Hotel was one of their things downtown. I don't know if you remember that or not. I went to that, well, two years in a row, I went to that. Very interesting idea to use an old abandoned hotel one more time as an art exhibit. So pretty advanced stuff, what they're doing. I don't know them very well personally, so I, I've seen what they do, I like it. But I, I couldn't say, yeah, this is the best guy in the world, go for it. But I would certainly be willing to work with them and getting something set up and help be on the board of directors or whatever to, to represent this, more of the city's behalf. So moving on from that, I also looked at a lot of properties in town again. And there are lots and lots of warehouses available. I have not spoken to any of the landlords or leasing agents about them to see if they're available on a month-to-month or on an annual basis. But I'm sure there's, there are some. That old sports complex that was the indoor softball, I believe it is, that's empty up here. It's bigger than what I asked for. But if you want to do an arts workshop and maybe include us in it, that would be, that would be a great location. Tons of parking, big building, already zoned for multi-use and, and large occupancy. And it's for lease. That, that kind of a location would be perfect. And then have somebody like M5, who has experience in the arts community, with the arts, the people that are in the arts and with managing this type of facility, which I don't have. So I'm, kind of came here originally thinking, I was just going to say, I have to have this funding. You just have to give it to me and just play desperate. But as I was walking out to go get some dinner, Sharon Stone Smith from the building next door, she came over and said, we leased a warehouse and we're not using it, why don't you use it?
My goodness.
And it throws, it throws, it throws a very happy monkey wrench into the middle of everything. And I'm going down either tomorrow or the day after to go take a look at it. But she says they pay 1,500 a month, so I'm guessing it's somewhere around 2,000 square feet, which would be plenty to get us through this year. We wouldn't be able to set up a big arts workshop or have classes or do any of the rest of that. And I haven't seen the building, so I don't know how it's zoned. I don't know if we can store a vehicle indoors or not. So there, that's still up in the air. But I've been a busy fellow, but I have no conclusions to give you at this point other than we still need that warehouse space. So we're still working on it.
Wow.
I know.
Come back next time.
It makes me tear my hair out at times, now that I have much left. You two were awfully quiet all of a sudden, what happened?
I'm celebrating. I said, done and done, that's how it takes. Just come here, say what you want and someone in the crowd will help you out.
Okay. You got any questions? Am I done? Should we put this off till next meeting? I hate to put it off any longer, but.
I do have a clarifying question. I heard you say approximately 18,000 a month for, or 18,000 a year based upon a 1,500 a month lease. In an email that you sent me, it sounded as if you would need $20,000 from economic development plus the cost of a lease, plus the donation from the city to close down roads and to have security detail, as well as to have insurance and other things.
I think there's some confusing there.
I'm trying to figure out what the total dollar amount is that you're asking for.
I don't need the 20,000 from economic development if I get the money from Measure H to do the lease funds. But you were reluctant to do Measure H for that.
They're both the same dollars.
They're both the same thing. The economic development fund.
Economic development is the last couple of pages.
I don't want to duplicate it, but the 20,000 is half of what we were looking for under the Measure H for the lease and the lease expenses. So we would have to be squeezed into a pretty small space. If this particular location works out, we would still need the cost, we still have to contribute to the cost of the maintenance and utilities and the other things, because they're basically willing to hand over the building. They did say that the landlord has other space available. So maybe we could expand into another, say, 1,500 square feet and then we have room to hold classes. We really wouldn't have any income from float storage and we wouldn't then have the issue of trying to permit indoor vehicle storage either. But we could kill a couple of birds with one stone here. We could help the museum out with their exhibit building. We could get M5 Arts to come out and set up a more complete arts workshop thing on a regular schedule with 24-hour access for the artists. And we could handle all the parade issues. So, and if we, so if we had the 20 grand, say, from economic development to go to M5 Arts, not to me, and then I get what I asked for, give or take 10,000 or so, we'd be set. I think we'd be ready to go. And I'm anxious to do this.
Sounds like the deal needs to cook just a little longer.
Maybe, yeah. That's what I was thinking, maybe we want to do it next meeting. But I, God, every week I put off, it just backs up all the parade stuff that needs to be done, but. Pardon me? Let me talk to Sharon.
Yeah, talk to Sharon.
I got to go see the space.
Yeah, talk to Sharon, the space is big and you should be able to fit the parade floats into it.
And maybe I can talk to Albert or somebody else in permanent's office to have them come out and check it out and see if it's suitable for what we want to do.
Yeah, meanwhile, the M, the M5 Arts thing, again, you know, the, what is our city's art strategy? That issue comes up yet again at a meeting.
Well, you've agreed to.
I'd love to know how, how that fits in. I mean, I think.
Well, you've agreed to put money aside for the arts in two different categories, as I understand. But yet you only have a very small amount of that dedicated at this point. And having an all-inclusive arts workshop where they teach all kinds of art and have all kinds of art shows and all kinds of art events, seems to me like would be a really good.
It would be, but you'd be eating up nearly all of it. And a bunch of that's for commissioning and paying for materials and a bunch of other stuff. So you're double dipping in places that it wouldn't work. I mean, I, I really enjoyed your parade. I know that those floats are used in other events. I've heard Burning Man and other things like that. My concern is the city, from your request, we're flipping the bill for housing and building. My concern is the city, from your request, we're flipping the bill for housing and building of things that will basically parade in our city for an hour once a year. So without a better strategy to this, and if you fleshed this out more and there was something, like, there's nothing there there yet?
No.
Excuse, sir, let me finish, thank you. I, again, I really enjoyed your parade, and those floats I know are used in other places. If other organizations that are also betting in front of them are going to fund in the same level that we are, that's a whole different conversation. But again, when you talk about art in public spaces, that's to fund the artists to do, to do it, and their materials and a lot of their time and other things that go along to that. I would not be comfortable saying, "We're gonna take half of that and half of the performing arts and half of this," and put that into a space that's also going to benefit them. Yes, they would have space to do it, a lot of them have space now to do it. They're doing it at their home, or they're doing it in other, other spaces, if we put them in one place. So again, without some sort of coordinated strategy to this, the ask that you're asking for I'm not comfortable with, under the current scenario. The 20,000 that would come from Kurt maybe can help us in the next year to plan for what this would be, but I think we're a long way, like David said, this just isn't cooked enough, and maybe you'll have, maybe you'll have a different answer in two weeks or in a month or whenever we talk about this again, but I would find it hard for me to get there.
I'm not proposing that I personally have anything to do with funding an arts workshop. I don't, that's, I think I made that clear, that's not what I'm in this for. I want to do the parade, and I want to have a place to store what we build, so we don't have to rebuild it every year.
I guess what I'm saying to you is, under your current proposal, which is still storage of parade items, I wouldn't be comfortable with spending $65,000 to do that.
Well, that's only a portion of that is for that usage.
What's the rest of it for?
There's about 30,000 is the lease, as I recall.
That's storage, that's the facility.
That's, that's storage, and it's also classrooms and workshops for costumes and float building and electronics design and LED lighting systems and other group activities that would happen all year long. So it's not, it's not just a one-hour event per year. Brings in people from all over the place for...
Okay, go visit the, go visit the warehouse space, and then we'll talk about this again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. The good news, Jerry, is we all love the parade. We're working with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so 50 and 57 are recommended for funding, and 1, 7, and 12 are not recommended for funding. Do we have people signed up to speak for any of those?
What page are we on?
Page six. Six, six.
Thank you.
And council did discuss the last three items on page six at the April 24th work session.
Right.
They were all not recommended for funding.
Right.
No speaker cards for those items.
Okay, great.
Do you have a question on 50?
50?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. The, I'm 50 on page six. The Cordova High Marching Band Program, it's kind of not clear to me, the marching band, about a third of the way down, two-thirds of the way down, the marching band program is seeking funding to purchase a second golf court and a new trailer. I understand that because my grandson was in that for about four years. He's not this year, 'cause he graduated. But the golf court is 17 years old, I'm not sure how old the trailer is that they're using, but they've been trying to get money for that for a long time, because the trailer is in pretty bad shape, or they're still using it for the equipment and for the, the whole thing, for the marching band. So they were after the new trailer, and the existing golf court is purchased 17 years ago and is used to transport students, instruments, and equipment. That'd be a pretty big golf court, to carry the students and the instruments and the equipment.
Yeah, most of us think of golf carts as the little two-people or four-people things that run around on golf courses. So it doesn't sound like this is an accurate description.
They are seeking funding for both a golf cart and a 20-foot trailer. Staff's recommendation is to fund the purchase of the golf cart this year, but not the trailer. And it was strictly due to the fact that you're already gonna be over the maximum amount of the Community Enhancement Fund, and when we looked at the recommendation by the school superintendent, this one ranked in the bottom 20, there was like 27 applications, and it was like 21.
Okay, and so, and so we know that not only do they have a trophy case that we've housed, we've actually given room to here at City Hall with trophies taller than I am, but last month, probably after this application was submitted, they brought home another half a dozen trophies from Fresno or somewhere, all of which are probably taller than I am. So, I mean, these guys need the trailer.
Well, you said yes on the school district, are they just okay for the golf court and skip the trailer for now, or what?
The school district endorsed the project overall, so I don't want to sound like the school district doesn't like the idea. We asked the school district, out of everything that was submitted, how does this one rank in relationship to other applications? This application was ranked 21st out of, I believe, 27 or 28. So of course they would love it if you funded both, but when we asked directly how this compared against other programs, it just wasn't ranked as high. So we felt giving them partial funding at least gets them towards the right direction, and in future years, we could consider something else.
Yeah, that's too bad.
I'd fund it. I would totally fund this.
Well, I would too, David.
Well, that's three of us.
We bought buses for the high school before.
Yeah.
It's just unfortunate when, you know, when the band, band shows up with this need that we would say, "Ah, no, we're just gonna drag it out a couple of years." It's only $20,000.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is, and they say it all the time, 20,000 here, 20,000 there, some, at some point, you're talking about real money.
Add real money.
I'd be fine with it, we're gonna have to find what we're gonna cut, though, at some point.
Okay, so we have three or four votes to...
Include it.
Definitely, five votes.
Five votes to include the whole amount, and see how it fits into the scheme of things.
On seven?
So on page seven, application numbers 18 and 45 were recommended, but at lower amounts, and you'll see the lower amount in red, under staff recommendation. Council has already voted on and discussed item number 32, also on page seven. You had voted no on that project. So the only items on this page to be discussed, if you choose, is 18, 45, and 33, if you don't agree with staff's recommendation.
Could we ask, in the case of 33, there seems to be two, two perhaps disconnected projects here.
They're next to each other.
One is a new floor, one is extending a program to middle school, and I think our answers on those two might be different.
And there's also two different applicants. So River City Christian Church, which is application 33, they're asking for not only replacement of their floor, converting it from carpet to wood surface and other aging equipment, but I believe they're also looking to expand their basketball program to middle school. And then application 45, which we are only recommending the funding of the Point Break Program, but if you were to look at their entire application, they're also seeking funding for a youth basketball program called Crossover.
Yeah, so personally, I'm familiar with the crossover that currently exists in Rancho Gordoa, which is item 33, that league, and extending that to middle school would be a great thing. But I don't know, I don't have the book in front of me, from their application, what portion of that 43 is involved in extending it to middle school? So that's the question I have.
We can look that up for you.
With regard to 45, I think we discussed last time that the Point Break workshops were the portion that we thought we would fund, and we were setting, we were setting aside the, the other part at this point.
The, because I had just been at school and found out that this is the, the non-secular version that the school district spends, sends their, sends the kids to attend for anti...
Is 45?
Yeah, the Point Break here, there's, there's a non-secular section that the school district sends the kids over to for anti-bullying, kids and, because the day we went to...
It's campus life, you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, the day we went to visit with Alex Padilla, and the activities director was here for a little while, and it was he, he and his, his kids were, were not at the thing with the Secretary of State because they were at Point Break.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Sander, of the $43,000 that they were asking for under application 33, 25,000 of it was for the wood and floor and installation, and then another 7,000 was for new basketball equipment, such as rims, backboards, et cetera, and another 2,500 for the scoreboard and PA system. So the only amounts I can see related to a youth basketball has to do with a high school family banquet night for 2,500, a middle school family banquet night for 2,500, equipment for 1,500, uniforms 7,000, and then administrative costs of 2.
So the expansion, I'm reading right from my sheet here, the expansion of the program to include a middle school league will allow more students to participate.
So, yeah, they show six new teams at a cost of $7,000 specifically for uniforms, but then they would need an additional 1,500 for equipment, potentially an additional 5,000 for banquets.
Just for the new teams?
That's what it says. Uniforms, six new teams, $7,000.
Okay, but AAU, as I just found out this weekend, because I happen to have a grandson playing AAU, they charge the parents, they charge the spectators, we paid $10, it was a big tournament over at Rosemont High, we paid $10 to go in. They actually run a little snack bar, but they, but, you know, you pay for food, and all the parents pay into the league for the privilege of participating. So I think the intent for AAU is for it to cover its own costs, based on what all the parents and the spectators are paying. And I strongly support the middle school, because that's what age it was. And oh, by the way, they won their first game by a score of 60 to 13.
So Stacy, we might need to go back to them and ask them to split their proposal between what it would cost to expand to middle school and what they're asking to improve their facility.
What, does the city attorney want to weigh in at all in the fact of public funds being used to improve facilities on a, inside of a church, a religious school?
So...
We don't, we don't have St. John Vianney asking us to fix up their...
I'll just say on, on basketball, there are, as a lifelong basketball player, I'll start the conversation with children who've played in all sorts of leagues, and we spoke to them very directly in the meeting that we had with them. This is a program where, if you're asking me a very direct question, we told them, and we told Councilmember Gatewood, that they list the religious part of their program as, as a primary and integral part of their activity. And they identify that they, that they engage in, in an activity involving the dissemination of religious material as, as, as part of the, their games. And so if asked a direct question on that, staff's recommendation is one that we thought about very carefully. I think if you take the city manager's alternative course of, of allowing him to work with these and other communities, and, you know, for, for Mr. Sander, we have, we have no objection to the spread of, of basketball programming into the middle schools, but there are very specific components to this that we, we have cautioned strongly about, and whether or not...
Yeah, 'cause I, I think to David's point, I see differences here, and again, I honestly think that this is better handled at the staff level and with the city attorney's consultation on, on these types of things. If we're funding a basketball program that's non-religious in nature, that's secular in nature, that's fine. If they're, if that's what they're providing, if it's the same program there that it would be if the full court of a community partnership or somebody else decided to have a basketball program, Rob, I don't know if you have a basketball program, but if you did, that'd be fine. I think the setting and where they're doing it, I think, is obviously of a legal concern, and again, part of this is coming from, I served on a school board that had, George Washington Carver, Sac City had, had an 18-year lawsuit being sued because they, they perceived that we were using public funds for, for religious activities, which we weren't. But it's very easy to get caught up in these things, and I, I mean, on the face of it, this is an improvement to a, a religious site, to a church. I don't know how we would get around that.
Again, I can't emphasize enough to any, any, you know, religious community that's watching, that there are lots and lots of things that you could do to partner with the city where we would be raising no legal issues. But if you come to us with a well-established program that has very strong religious components that are integral to its...
And I'm not even talking about that.
Its activity.
I'm not talking about the programmatic side of it, though, Adam.
Didn't you have concerns?
Yeah, and again, that's what I'm saying, that I would love to find a way to fund a program that is secular in nature, that is basketball or other after-school programs like that. We, we know that they are effective. The way that some of these proposals were written, and part of it is, I just don't think they understood the constraints of the program or the funding source. And so again, figuring out how, at the staff level, if something we worked out, maybe it can't. Maybe, you know, there, I mean, I know, I worked for a foundation that had very similar rules about not funding certain things, and once a grantee or an applicant understood that we would bar them from that kind of activity, they didn't want to take the money because that's, you know, churches are in the business of saving souls, not, not just run a basketball program. So if it doesn't fit with what they want to do and how they want to run their program, then they don't need to take our money.
Well, we did actually vote on both of these already.
To, to the city manager, I've, I've mentioned our, our meeting, do you have anything that you would supplement with our, our conversation in, in the meeting? Did they give you any indication that, other than that the religious component was, was a valuable and important component of their programming?
I get it.
I, I think it's, like I said before, the best course of action is for the city council to identify a pot of funding and allow us to work with different organizations, including faith-based organizations, to identify programs that meet the criteria and work in the best interest of the community.
I'd rather fund the baton courts, and the baton courts got voted down. We have a speaker on the side.
Yes, Jeff Coons, could you please come forward and introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Jeff Coons, I've been on River City Christian, the staff, for 27 years, and I was actually very integral in starting Crossover for the high school and the middle school about 13 years ago. And we've been running this program here in Rancho Gordoa for 13 years, and what is so beautiful about this program is it really does comply with the conversation that was just had with regards to the religious component and the secular component. Crossover basketball is designed with four major components. It's called confidence, character, responsibility, and faith. But the faith component is absolutely 100% voluntary. It's two events that happen throughout the, the year that are absolutely just, in addition to the regular season, they have nothing to do with your competition, with the actual, you know, weekly league. You have a practice once a week with a coach, and at that practice, we deal with character issues and integrity. It's not, it's not religious-based at all, it's just absolutely character principles. So there's a conversation about that at your practice, and then there's a game once a week, and at the competition, there's not... a week and at the competition, there's not a religious component to that as well. So, it's beautiful, it's beautifully set up. We've been at Cordova High School for literally 13 years promoting this event and promoting young men and women from our community that participate with the program. So, it's been a great coexisting opportunity for young people to play basketball and we are desiring to start a middle school component of it and so, I would pull out the two and say, if you're not comfortable with the facility, which I understand, then give us some assistance with starting a middle school, which would be uniforms, it would be equipment, it would be just, you know, uses to be able to get the middle school portion up and running. And so, we have worked with Cordova High School, we've worked with Kenny High School, they've welcomed us with open arms because of the fact that it is not confrontational, it is not a conflict of secular and religious. And so, it's been a beautiful program. Right now, in fact, I actually left the gym because I'm the Grant Napier of crossover basketball and so, I left the gym and came over here to the meeting so that there would be clarity and so, it's happening right now in the gym and every week, there's about 80 students that participate with the high school and we would like to replicate that at the middle school level.
So, full screen, I was working with you, I know we heard that some of the other sports leagues haven't fared well as far as recruiting kids, are they funding you?
No, absolutely not. There's no funding whatsoever, has not been for all these years and so, at this point, we are dealing with-
I'm just saying that that's kind of, that's the thing that we're dealing with here, at least I am, is that it's one thing to say, "Yeah, kids, you can go to this," I think they may have some of the same constraints that we have when it comes to funding your programs.
So, Jeff, you were going to comment on your relationship with the school district?
Yeah, I was the youth pastor at our church for 14 years and I was on campus regularly and it was one of those programs where they were able to support it because it totally fits within the framework of, you know, what needs to function within the school district. And so, I had a wonderful relationship with Cordova High School the entire time I was the youth pastor, we never had one issue, it never had one complaint, we never had one problem with regards to running the crossover program and, you know, doing that in connection with Cordova High School. Same thing with Kenny High School, those students are really in need and it's been an amazing opportunity for those young people to kind of connect and have, you know, socialization with other students and, you know, kind of providing hope and encouragement and confidence for them and character issues. So, we would like to replicate that through Mills and Mitchell.
First of all, if you're here, who's doing play-by-play over there?
You know what, they're really hurting right now, so, no. So, yeah, it's-
So, first of all, Pastor, thank you for coming, I appreciate you and everything you're doing over there. So, now, we have a school district and a couple of schools that are allowing it in, but we're afraid to do some sort of funding to help them out, to help grow this thing into the junior highs and middle schools. So, I for one, want to do this, I want to help out this group and I want to help this program out because I want a basketball court and we've already talked about this, I've said many times and I think this is a nice program. I don't think that, I mean, Dave Sanders' own son went this and there's not the experience of that, they're trying to prophylitize on it. This is a program that basically helps out the whole community, helps us have the basketball and helps us reach a community that's untouched and so, I don't see the reason why we should not be 100,000% fully with you guys.
I think what's really interesting too about this, I can vouch for this, for the fact that it is so community-based, literally, there's a handful of students that go to our church that are a part of this league. Over the years, 95% of the participants with the league are Rancho Cordova and community kids, not even church kids from our, you know, from our body. And so, it's just been really fun to have an opportunity to allow the community kids to come in and have a safe place, a healthy place where they can compete and enjoy and be invested in their character.
So, Jeff, you could break the budget apart so that there was a section for expanding the program to middle school?
Yeah, it actually is broken apart, I'm looking at it right now, it is actually broken apart in there and so, I would recommend that we talk about, you know, the middle school section, the equipment section, and the uniform section. So, that comes out to, just that alone comes out to a little over $10,000, that would cover getting the middle school up and running. Beyond that, if there's a willingness to participate in any kind of the facility that is 18-years-old now and, you know, is in need of some help.
Would you propose to do the middle school at your current site, the middle school program?
I think that's ideal for the fact that we do, as River City, in the community of Rancho Cordova, we desire a positive relationship with our community and I think it's beautiful that it's set up to where it's not a conflict of interest or religion and secular, you know, work, that I think it's beautiful that the community comes to the church and they have a great experience and there's not an issue at all.
You got the equivalent of one gym, you would then-
Exactly, we've got the equivalent of one gym.
Program in another night of the week or something.
How we've done it in the past is high school's on Monday night, middle school is on Sunday afternoon and that really has worked well for families, they're available and middle school students are available on Sunday afternoons, there's not a lot of conflict with their schedule, et cetera, so that's how we've run it in the past, Monday night, high school, Sunday afternoon, middle school.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to share, appreciate it a lot.
Could I just ask, Staff, do you know the answer to the question that Mr. Terry posed?
Which question?
The question about whether or not the other public agencies that River City just mentioned have actually received public funds, when they describe and talk about support-
I'll clarify, so-
I think you should-
First off, let me clarify, I'm not afraid of anyone suing us or I'm afraid of funding an organization. Coming from a school district, though, where regularly religious organizations ask to use facilities and a lot of other things, I've learned in my career what I can and can't do by law in a lot of ways. This is a unique ask, so, it was thrown out there and just repeated by my colleague that they're working with the school district, therefore, they're already doing this. The school district is not giving them any funding.
So, if I prove the school district's giving them funding, would then you approve?
Just said they're not.
Well, he's, I mean, he's not going through all their books and looking for every time they might have donated.
Has the school district cut you a check for this program ever?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But if I find it, then you would approve?
No, I would tell you that they're probably making a mistake too.
Gentlemen, you really don't need to argue about it.
I want to clarify what I was trying to say, though. My question is, if any of these government entities were giving funds and they have a legal opinion about how they got to do that, I would be very interested in seeing that and seeing if it held up in court because, again, I served on a body that got sued regularly by faith-based organizations because of the way that they were treated. So, again, when I look at things like this, this is the only church that's ever come to us asking for us to improve their facilities. That could be legal, if it is, I would, you know, look at something else. I believe in separation of church and state and that's one thing that I'm looking at when I look at these programs, just like the rest of our staff is, but also, we as fiduciary people or as fiduciaries of our city have the responsibility to look at our liability and our risk in allocating certain funds and again, that's why I would very strongly recommend that we take requests like this and allow city staff to negotiate them, not to do it at the dais, because none of us here are legal experts and our one legal expert is telling us to tread very lightly with this.
And since the expansion of the group is only about $10,000, then it could easily fit into the programs that we've talked about, asking Cyrus to look at.
It could, I mean, to be honest with you, David's question about, could you hold it off-site, would it probably mitigate the risk factor to the city even greater than holding it at a church? But, again, again, this is the first time anyone has, any faith-based organization has asked us for this kind of funding, so we've never really run down it. Saint John Vianney's never asked for these types of resources for their own programs. We're in very uncharted territory and to say that just because we like it, we should fund it, is not a responsible response.
I think when you use public money to pay for physical improvements to churches and churches' core physical facilities, you get into an area that would be much, much harder to defend and I've given you my opinion on this, I think that there are lots of alternatives to work with programs that provide recreational benefits or services that don't involve some of the characteristics of this particular project. Again, and if there's any opinion from another school district that, or other public agency that would be of help to us, I absolutely welcome the support, I welcome the opportunity to give a call to the general counsel to a school district if they have an opinion about making grants for this type of project, but I, when asked a direct question about this by council or council members, I need to give you my opinion.
So, the part of this that we really, that we could support would be the expansion to the middle school.
I would prefer staff to negotiate whatever that was.
But, but-
And without giving them priority.
By assigning that portion to the fund that we are identifying for Cyrus to try to put together.
Or you could do it through RCA since this is a sports thing.
A sports thing.
But, six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Yeah, I would probably be more comfortable with that comparatively to, go ahead.
And frankly, David, I would prefer to run it through the RCA, just for me specifically, simply because it seems that the more, the more, that a real benefit of the Athletic Association, as we talked about before, is getting all the sports, the youth sports groups together in a room at the same time and really coordinating what they're providing and making sure that we're not trying to fund so many groups of people that it totally diffuses the funding.
The collaboration is the big benefit there, but it would still have to comply with, you know, the outlines that Adam's given us on several occasions.
And since they're, and since they're a part of, since this program is a part of AAU anyway, then it makes more sense that it be discussed through RCA.
I would be comfortable with that, my, David, my only caution to you is you are creating a liability for RCA in a way that they haven't had to accept. So, and again, I don't know if that's, get a legal opinion from Adam to advise your lawyers, obviously, but, again, if this, even if this wasn't illegal or wasn't wrong, the risk of just the fact that somebody doesn't like it and costing RCA and the city money, the coffers and our insurance is a lot better than RCA, so I just, that's asking a lot and I would still recommend staff do it, I think it does fit there better than what we were talking about with festivals or micro grants or whatever it is, but, I mean, it's like, this is like sequel law, even if you've done everything right, you could still get sued.
Could be a matter of staff negotiating and staff signing the contract and then, oh, by the way, talk to them about how it gets done.
So, I think, Counsel, can I make the-
You just offered up, though, I'm just saying, you offered up an organization's ability, you know, to do something that does create bigger support.
Okay, let's just agree that we're going to hand this program to Cyrus, the expansion part of it, to Cyrus, to put, to consider with the rest of them.
Can I just be real clear on one point, though? If you have any legal obligation, any legal prohibition against the use of funds, you can't overcome that by giving it to another entity and then telling them to do what you couldn't do with the money we just gave you.
Yep, that's correct, right.
Thank you.
I think the point that I made earlier, if the council could identify the outcome and the objective that you're trying to accomplish and also, ultimately, we need a budget from you two, this cannot be an open-ended checkbook. Once we identify those two, the execution and the details on the implementation is best left to staff because we have experts on our team and could be different ways to do it, where some of it could be followed through various nonprofit organizations, some may be directly from the city, but I think deciding that at the dais may not be an appropriate decision.
Right.
So, are we going to couch, this will be one of those ones we couch and bring back and let you guys really discuss it or what are we?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking that.
The expansion part.
I'm hoping that the council could agree on a budget tonight, but that's, that may be a lofty goal, but that's really what our hope is.
At this point, we've got 82,000.
Well, that was for festivals.
Two o'clock.
Maybe for, maybe for these, you say 40 grand and for these basketball programs?
No.
Again, I think if you get into saying there's X dollars for X programs-
Okay, the city manager asked for a dollar amount, so.
But I think you were talking about, he wasn't talking about-
He wasn't talking about just basketball, he was talking about-
I don't think he was asking to come up with a program by adding up the individual amounts with the tacit direction that you're going to do each of these particular things. I think you were asking for a total amount.
To lead with the 82,000?
Because there might be someone else that's, again, non-religious that would say we would like to participate in those, in that pool.
This is the category that came up to 360,000 and if you take crossover out of it, it came up to only 252,000. So, all right, so-
And the city does already fund a youth basketball program?
Oh, God.
So, we're already funding out of the 17, 18 budget.
Which was the technical basis for the recommendation-
Correct.
-in the first place.
How about we recess until tomorrow? I'm not going to pick on her.
All right, so, on page eight, we have dispensed with-
Madam Mayor, we've been here five hours on this, I'm honestly wondering if we would be better off adjourning and taking this up tomorrow.
Tomorrow? I can't do it.
I'm not available tomorrow. Can we solve other items on the agenda?
One more.
Any other day this week that could possibly work?
I have no idea, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's only nine o'clock, I know we're not too far in it, but, we're on page seven.
Should we try for maybe a 10-minute recess and try to work out some schedules, work on some schedules?
I don't care who's scheduled.
I don't know, do we have an estimate? I mean, at this rate-
We've already discussed every item on page eight.
It'd be 2:00 AM by the time we get to page 20.
We've discussed page eight.
You discussed everything in yellow on April 24th and you've already discussed the top two items because those were items that Councilmember Gatewood had to recuse himself on, so you've actually already discussed page eight.
Okay.
I would like to continue to see what that means, five minutes till nine o'clock right now, we could have a break if you'd like to do that, but I'd like to finish this if we're good.
All right, let's take it-
Yeah, I'm not optimistic we're going to finish it tonight, but-
Let's take a 10-minute recess.
For what?
Just to stop, or me?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. We have a significant concern that because of the length of time it's taking to get through these 300 or 400 projects, which probably, it's probably not that many, it just seems like it, that we're losing track of the full scope of the Community Enhancement Fund. So, we're going to jump down to page 19. If Stacy will remind us that there are basically five buckets to the Community Enhancement Fund and we've only been discussing one bucket, which was anticipated to be funded at 952,000. However, as we have all tried to remind ourselves, that the Public Works Budget is also 952,000, that the Police Department Budget, the Public Safety Budget, is 1.3 million and then Economic Development, Investment, Business Development, and Community Development is also 952,000 and all of these numbers specifically were agreed to at the beginning and had been structured to total up to the best estimate of the Finance Department in terms of the amount that this sales tax is going to generate. So, while we don't want to get into the- amount that this sales tax is going to generate. So, while we don't want to get into the, the complicated discussion of taking something from over here and throwing it in over there and vice versa, because that will just confuse the entire world, we do need to stop and take a look at these four categories in the back, including, well, the five, including Administration, and make sure, make sure that we know what's being proposed here before we go back and try to, try to recapture where we were with the community programs. So, Stacy, if you want to start with, you might as well start with Legacy.
Sure. It may be helpful if we switch back to the PowerPoint. There's a slide per section, and it's a little bit easier to read. It does list these same amounts, but I think the version is easier in PowerPoint.
Super.
So, like Mayor Budge mentioned, there are different categories within the Community Enhancement Fund. The overall category of community grants is generally set to be about one point seven million dollars, and that includes everything from arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports, education, and then the other category. So, in addition to the community grants, which were the one point seven million dollars, we also have other categories such as the Legacy Projects, Public Safety, Public Works, Economic Development, So, on the screen is what the estimated budget amounts are for those individual categories. So, these amounts would be in addition to the one point seven million dollars. That would comprise all community grants, which are the grant applications that individuals have submitted and that we have discussed so far.
So, that's actually up from the nine fifty-two that's in our spreadsheet, one point seven?
Because the nine hundred and fifty-two thousand is just specifically arts, culture, history, entertainment, and sports, but there's also an additional four hundred and seventy-six thousand for education.
Oh, sorry.
And an additional three hundred thousand for other.
Got it. Got it. I just.
We spent so much time in that category.
I started at the top. Okay.
I'm not sure if there's a specific listing you want to go through, but this happens to be the items under Public Safety. So, the Public Safety budget, we are recommending at one point three million dollars, and that includes three primary projects, one being the continuation of the funding of the Crime Suppression Unit. And the second line item is fifty percent of the funding for an RCPD officer assigned to the regional transit stations, and then fifty percent of a school resource officer plus K-9 and Mark Patrol car. So, those three items comprise the recommendations for the Public Safety budget.
Stacy, can you go back one real quick? Where's the other eight point one million? Subtracting.
The community grants are separate from this screen. This screen only represents the department-led initiatives and legacy. So, in addition to what you see on the screen.
Eight point one, it's one point seven.
It's one point seven.
But it makes.
It makes up about an eight million dollar budget. Yes. I don't know if you have any specific questions for staff on the Public Safety recommendations?
Are the, are the second two new? Or did we do that last year?
The second two are new, and we are sharing the cost for the regional transit officer with the City of Folsom, I believe. And then, we're sharing the cost of the school resource officer with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District.
And where would that officer be assigned?
I don't know if the school has specified the location.
I think they float.
Cyrus is at Cordova.
Yeah, I, let me just elaborate on that. I did have a request in light of all the safety concerns that we're facing in schools. I did receive a request from the superintendent that they were hoping to add another school resources officer. We have two in Rancher-Cordova, and Folsom has three. So, her request was to bring us on par with the city of Folsom. And she also offered to fund half of the officers. So, this would be our, our contribution would be half of the officer for the, for the school.
The only I would reiterate, I'm fine with that. I think I was fine with it when Debbie asked for two a few years ago, but I know we had, we had concerns about where they were spending their time and what things they were working on. And I would just reiterate to the chief and to you that I'd also like to see a training budget for SROs that includes site visits to other successful SRO programs, because I think there, we have a lot of opportunity to improve that program.
It's, that has been discussed. In fact, the program has been completely revamped, and the Assistant Chief is here if you need to more.
Nothing specific. I just, I just think, when I was on the school board, one, I think SAC Cities is doing some very interesting things that I think we could benefit from learning about. But there are some, and LA Unified has some very interesting approaches and additional training that they provide their officers. So, again, I'm, they're cops, I'm not. But I would say that there, there is an opportunity for us to, to train up those officers.
Absolutely.
To spend their time doing different things and understanding what their role is with the principal and with the school district and what is and what isn't their job.
What's the benefit of the additional regional transit officer?
Huge. It's important that we have police riding the train as much of the day as possible. And what they do is ride segments, and then, you know, they'll ride down one place, and then they'll get off and take another train back, kind of like, you know, the way the Highway Patrol patrols the highways, so that the people who are potential fare evaders or up to no good on the trains never really know where the police officer's going to show up next. It's been a huge deterrent.
So, I guess that's a, that's my line question. You know, is it a regional transit responsibility to police their trains, or is it our responsibility to police their trains?
I think that RCPD would tell you that the most success has been accomplished when all three or four of the agencies have worked together in a unified effort. That's why when, when they have done stings at, whether it's been Mill Station, or Cordova Town, or somebody else's station, they've had, they've had multiple jurisdictions, multiple agencies focusing on that and have, have just been able to eliminate a huge amount of loitering and illegal or potentially illegal activity by being proactive in covering these stations and the trains. The, you can see it in the number of people who are willing to take the train to events at the Golden One Center. RT has officers, has funded officers riding the trains for those events, and people of all ages are willing to ride the train, and you can see it in the ridership numbers, because they feel so much more secure.
I'm just weighing this versus, say, for example, you took the hundred and ten and hired an executive director for the Police Activities League. Would that be a greater benefit to the community than half of an additional RT Transit Police Officer?
Well, that's one of those competing, from my perspective, that's one of those competing, which is the most important competing public need, because, okay, we have a need to, we have a need to provide appropriate activities for kids. But on the other hand, we have a need to, a clear public need to clean up the air quality and encourage more people to ride transit. And if they don't feel safe on the train, they won't do it.
So, are there forty or, forty or so RT officers now? I think I've lost track.
No. I don't think there are that many. But, but it's a difficult question, because there are actually three different kinds of people.
Right.
All right.
Partnerships with the city, with the county.
Well, no, 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 no.
There's fair inspector.
There's sworn, there's sworn officers. There are fair inspectors, and then there are a third group of people, and they've, they've changed names of all these things.
So, can I ask a different question? Who asked for that? PD or RT?
Good question.
Both.
Because the school district asked for, who started asking?
Actually, we have been, we have been trying to get more security and more patrol on regional transit trains. And for quite some time, we could not get any traction. So, with the, with the new executive director at Regional Transit, we were able to have some more productive discussions. They also have a new chief at Regional Transit for the police, for security. And that's when they committed to bring one person on board if we could enter into a level of partnership.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, is RT their own police force, or their SAC PD?
I think they do through a contract with SAC PD.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriff's department.
They have staff from both agencies.
I would like to ask our Assistant Chief to elaborate.
I may be naive, but I thought all of them were SAC PD officers, but maybe I'm just wrong. And I'm not on RT's board, so I have no idea.
I'm ready. Fire away.
That's my question. Are we hiring a SAC PD officer with this?
No, so it's a collaborative effort. We, Ranch Cordova supplies half, pays for half of the body. RT pays for the other half, along with the City of Folsom pays for one half of an officer, and RT pays for that other half. Those two partner together to ride the Gold Line, which runs from downtown all the way up through Folsom. So, they have a vested interest in that line, and that's their primary assignment.
And RT is getting ready to start on the seventeenth or so of June to start running the train to Folsom until eleven-thirty at night.
So, Cyrus, the management question would be, by contributing to this, are we displacing existing resources? And now they're able to capture the cost of another officer from the two cities that would have been served by their existing budget. But since we're now contributing, they can redeploy that elsewhere?
No, this is not a maintenance of effort question. RT is hiring, has hired as many people, and it's, and it's more complicated because it becomes a big union issue. They actually had to get special dispensation from one union in order to create this third category of community service people who ride the trains to try to help keep people safe.
So, is this one of those things that we're going to have to put in the general budget, or is this a one-year push, because that's what the Measure H funds were for? Is it something we're going to be continually paying this, this one RT officer and the new school officer as well?
The city council, in, when we had the larger programming discussions some years ago, I think it was a year, a couple of years ago, identified this level of fund, the above level of funding, about a million, as an ongoing commitment from Measure H to public safety. So, our request now, this is, you can view both of these, mainly the regional transit, more specifically, regional transit, as a pilot program to see how effective it is. But also, don't forget that part of this effort was working or dealing with some vagrancy and panhandling issues in the community, people that we felt were getting on the train to come to the community, and that's, this was also related to it. So, it's part of a bigger program. And obviously, we can reassess in about a year to see how effective it is and make modifications if we need to. But the idea, like many other programs, if there is a commitment, we want it to be a multi-year commitment at some point.
I think from what I've been told from the president to the Folsom Lake College campus and Ranch Cordova, that it's been very beneficial to the students who are running the light rail also. They feel better and more comfortable about using it. I mean, they get off at Mill Station, walk across the street, and there they are at campus, and they can get back off. And it's the, I'm not sure what they're costing a student for semester, but it's almost nothing compared to what it would be if they were trying to drive a car or anything like that. But it's something that's been very beneficial from what I've been told. So, I think that's something that's been very worthwhile to do our part and have the police, I mean, the regional transit do their thing also. So, it's been worthwhile.
And of course, and Bob is right. Folsom Lake College, it specifically set out some time ago to locate as many of their facilities on light rail as they possibly could. And so, this location was perfect for them, which is why Economic Development in the city fought so hard against the eliminating of redevelopment to figure out how to put, put the campus in that particular location. And, and our high school students also ride the train from place to place. The, the most recent program at RT provides student passes for only twenty dollars a month, which is a fraction of what it used to be. And the school district was saying the other day that they, it's, it's, it's also helping with truancy, because they, they know who the, they know who the pass is assigned to, and if the pass is never refunded, you know, you do it, you do it with the connect card machine. So, if the pass is never refinanced, then they know that nobody's using that pass, and those are the people that they look for to ensure that they are actually making it to school.
So, I think I'm good with both of these additions. I appreciate the additional information. I would just remind folks that, you know, the first line in Measure H was "City Services and Enhancing Anti-Gang Youth Violence Prevention Programs and Increasing Neighborhood Police Patrols." So, this was the first thing we said we were going to do with funds. So, I think it's a good experiment to see if we can do something at RT that actually makes a dent. To Bob's point, RT has hired a handful of new officers and cleaned up the, they've been doing things the last eighteen months that are making people feel safe. We should see, engage how this actually works, and then decide if we want to keep doing it. But I would say, spend it. I don't want to be telling anybody at PD how to do their job. I will just say that most school districts have really shied away from having K-9s, and I saw that as part of the proposal for the SRO.
It's not an apprehension K-9. It's a narcotics detection and a gun detection dog.
Okay.
It'll be a lab, not a shepherd.
I want to say Twin Rivers had the same issue. I don't think theirs was an apprehension dog either, and they went round and around just from a liability standpoint.
They were huge supporters of the idea. In fact, it was their idea in the beginning.
The school district?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Super. Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, the next category is a broad category that includes economic development initiatives, investment opportunities, business development, as well as community development. And the community development component does include kind of that broadened scope of cultural and community events and things of that nature. So, there's several different initiatives listed here. Some of them are continued programs, such as the Business Incentive and Revolving Loan Program. Those are existing programs that we have in place, as is the Sign and Facade Program. And then, we also have been doing neighborhood services, specifically homeless and nuisance property abatement. This is at a larger scope based upon current expenditures. A new campaign is the Make It Here Campaign, and then the banner placemaking and gateway signs is a continuation or the broadening of the city's banner placement program. And it would be focused on key corridors such as Coloma, the Shopping District, the Beryl District, Folsom Boulevard, and Zen Vindal. I'm not sure if you have specific questions, but staff is here to answer them if you have questions. Any questions?
Well, I don't have some time to talk to you.
What?
I have an idea, but I wanted to know, I thought we were going to have.
Every, every council is just going to get, right here?
I don't have time to talk to you.
Okay. All right. So, when we were down in Texas and a couple of other cities that I've been with David and a couple others, we've noticed that the Chamber of Commerce is used in a better fashion to be able to support the small business owners in the region. And specifically, I had a chart, which I'm actually going to bring up right now and talk about. So, in their communities, and this is about six. So in their communities, and this is about six of them, they fund their chamber to do workforce development, small business development, some retention on small, small businesses and internal marketing. Basically, the chamber is used not only to help coach. And so I came back after the OSTRIP, no, OSTRIP and the other Garland trip and I asked, at first I asked Kurt what he would, what he would think if we had those type of services done through our chamber. Because right now we're, you know, it's, it's one of those things, we're not 100% doing that. I said, how much would you think about that if, you know, your budget, it's about a million, million five, how much would you see? And he said about $250,000. And I said, well, we're probably not ready for that at that level yet. But for those kinds of services, since a majority of the sales tax comes off the, the business owners in the city, we are looking for some place that we can actually go to get the help of, you know, workforce development and the small business development, that kind of thing, and that's our chamber. And so I would like to see the chamber funded in, and Donald said this is the right place to bring this up, in the economic development budget of somewhere around about $125,000. Because I believe that at this point, if we can show, it was amazing seeing that organizations show a separation between the small business and, and those type of ownerships and the big things that the overall vision of the city is and the overall vision of economic development is as a group. And where they were able to say, in our answers to be like, Kurt, work on, you know, work on the movie theater, work on bringing in cash for the city. And then they said, if a flyer needs to be created, well, that goes to their Chamber of Commerce. And so when a small business owner, I mean, not like myself, I wouldn't be running to the city for help. I would be running to the chamber. And then depending on what it is, the chamber is excellent about making sure that they, if it's a real estate deal of some sort, they source it to the city. And if it's, if it's, well, we really want to touch on this community, what do you think about that? They source it back down to the chamber. And so I think that at this time, a way to be able to help a lot of our small business owners, who are the ones that basically fund and put all this money together because it comes out of us on a sales tax measure, would be to give us a spot to basically work with. And I don't think it's the city. I don't think it's the right spot to overwhelm Kurt, who I literally think does 15 jobs on top of development. But this is for the small business owner. I think that something like that should be handed down to Diane's group to basically be our voice or the small business owner voice at the city. And I think this is the right area to actually have that kind of thing.
Okay, so let me ask you to kind of define that a little more.
Okay.
Because for instance, last, what was it, Tuesday? We had the, the SBDC group in, or Wednesday, whatever that was. And there were 125 people in the room and only six or so of them owned a business in Rancho Cordova. Maybe as many as 12, but certainly not any large number. But that was specifically for a variety of, it was considered workforce development. So they actually are doing some of that already. So who would be the audience for it? And what kind of services would they provide?
Well, the audience would be like the printer company, a, a small, well, it depends on the situation. So a printer company, a small bank, a IT firm, a, a, a cleaning company, someone that would have a storefront that would come in and have questions for small business, someone that's starting a business in Rancho Cordova and wants to know what the lay of the land is. Someone that is getting ready, someone that has a small business, probably under, let's say, you know, 30 to 50 employees.
Okay.
Small that would want that kind of resource.
What's the service that?
Yeah, what's the service? Are you talking about referrals?
A perfect example for me, workforce development. I would go to her to talk to her about helping me to generate IT vendors or IT employees to help my company out. That would be a small example.
People you could hire?
People I could hire. And then I could be like, look, I'm looking for this. Right now I know Diane's overwhelmed. I mean, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. She's got a staff of, I think, two and a quarter and basically does the thing. But through this, the city should be telling her, we want more of this. I need a resource to be able to get that. Next one is small business development. I'm not going to go to Kurt and ask, how are you going to help me grow my business?
So you're saying training?
Huh? No.
Training?
How to, well, I mean, if it's training that's required. But sometimes it's not career required. It's more like, give me the numbers and where I should be selling my product in the city of Rancho Cordova. What do you think a good, helping me build a good marketing plan is?
And so, so a lot of that, so what Linda was just talking about, the SBDC, which is a federal fund through the Economic Development Agency, EDA.
Yeah, EDA.
The, the lead agency for that in Northern California is the Metro Chamber, which has $5 million a year to administer programs like that. So I think, I think what might have happened, you ran into an organization that was getting a bunch of funding for this in Texas, doing this kind of work. Maybe it's, sometimes it's chambers. Up until two years ago, it was Chico State that ran that and the Metro Chamber got the grant.
And before that, it was SAC State. But that's years ago.
That's way before me. The workforce development is SETA, which is the, the county workforce, the Workforce Investment Board. I think what it stands for. And that's the weird, that's the difference about a lot of places in Texas is that because there's not a lot of service providers, one of them ends up doing like 15 different things.
Let me do this. I'm going to go 5,000. As a small business owner, which that would be me and David right now, where do you think we go for support when we need help for things? I have no idea.
What kind of support?
Anything from people, money, direction, guidance.
To money, you go to your bank?
No. A lot of times with small business owners, what we do, this is what you all do. We start with Diane, thank God for her, and we say, look, I'm having trouble with this. What do you think about that? I want to expand here. Can you help me with, can you help me throw something? Can you help me grow? And you need a place that basically isn't just throwing organizations. And so she needs the money to be able to produce the help. And the guidance, and as a city that's super supportive of this business community, this is the thing that I believe. And I was talking to, and, and don't think I didn't flush this out through staff too. I mean, I did have Kurt talk and I know I have Kurt and Diane actually in talks and talking with Cyrus because there's a definite gap. And if we can find a way to, at this point, bring this ally that's unwasted, I feel like it's a wasted thing that we could, the chamber as having it be connected to us. And it's so much more than, it, it could grow into so much more than it is right now and really become that ally. So when someone's, there's certain things, like we, we put a lot on our staff as a, as a group. And I think that we need to personally fund the chamber to take the small business and small organizations that want to be able to work with and be able to like, say, here Diane, these are for you. And then be able to really pull back and be like, this is the stuff that our economic development should be working on.
I don't, I don't think our economic development part now is doing a lot of, a lot of what you're saying. I think the interesting thing is that, and maybe it is at the chamber, some sort of like ombudsman, right? Like if you have questions about growing your business, about funding your business. Yeah, I mean, we put on, not SETA workshops, but we put on SBDC, we put on, what's the name, SCORE, which is the Society of Retired Executives.
Service Corps of Retired Executives.
We've had that here. We've had a handful of other ones. So the infrastructure, what you're talking about exists.
Google came, Google came and signed up everyone to get, get your business online.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and you know who did that? BCSOS.
Well, there you go. So we'll refer them to you.
Perfect. That's what I want.
Yeah, that'd be really nice to talk about right here. But maybe there's some way of having an expert referral source that, and it could be housed at the chamber. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a lot of what you're talking about to be city role at all. I don't think anyone's trying to do that. I think they have people that come in that are like, you know, I want to get a permit and I need, I need help with planning and building and everybody else.
And we have a committee at the city to do that.
Right. I mean, and it's even, it's even like, like that story that ran in the Business Journal about, you know, the deposits that we put somewhere and there's going to be some Rancho Cordova loan fund. There's not a Rancho Cordova loan product. Like they can't run over there and say, I, I, you know, I'm a business in Rancho Cordova, so I want that loan. That's not what they're going to do.
Right.
Just from a fair lending standpoint, that's not allowed. So it would be interesting to see if there was a way for Kurt and Diane to work together to come up with something that was like the quarterback to get you to the right service that you need. Because, and maybe, I mean, literally it's as simple as here's three lenders that do SBA lending. You need to go there.
Right.
Right? And you're not ready to even get that loan until you do this, this and this.
And it's not enough, and it's not enough just to have someone to like, hey, go to these three people. It's actually having a couple of people that can actually champion the person through and understand that, you know, for every small business we're able to retain. I mean, the, the amazing part about Rancho Cordova is we have four to one odds. Those aren't just giant companies. Those are small businesses like mine.
Right.
And, and to be able to have someone that solely focused on the, I mean, there's only so much we can ask Kurt and his economic team to do. They're not, they're not, they're not reaching out.
They're not, and they're not doing this. I, I guess referring, what I'm saying referring is to take the time and the, and the investment and the money. I'm not sure where you came up with $125,000, but that would probably pay for like one expert and their car and their time and their expenses to do something in a referral source of making sure that they got to the millions of dollars that SB, SBDCs are, are gauged on their effectiveness by the capital that they get, that, that comes to small businesses. So that's their job. And we shouldn't be recreating the wheel with a bunch of things that already exist. Because that's really expensive and I don't think you've budgeted nearly enough to do something like that.
And two things occur, I mean, two things, two things come to mind here. One of them is the fact that Explore specifically reaches out to all the small business to get all sorts of information and, you know, giveaways or brochures or flyers or whatever their service is, little keychains. You know, I have two little keychains that say, I love Rancho Cordova. And they put on these events to specifically connect new residents and new employees with the small business in town. So that's one thing that we're funding already. The second thing is it strikes me, what you're, you're describing is more like the kind of thing they do in incubators, which is what we saw in Boulder, Colorado, where they take the, the bright ideas coming out of the University of Colorado to, to this incubator. It, it was an original incubator. And they have a stable of 450 different experts, everything from finance to legal, to marketing, to HR. And the, the person who had this bright idea, they helped them determine whether or not their, their idea has legs and could actually become a marketed product or service. And they connect them with all these experts. But that's, that's a whole separate organization. Then they would take, if the businesses that were, that were qualified to become a real business, then they would take it and hand it to the Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce helped them to grow and gave them a, a vehicle for meeting other small business owners and, and a way in which to advertise their business.
I like, I like the way, I like the way you're going with that one, but I think it's one step more than that because it's like the Menchies that just opened up. And he wants to go get, okay, so who's going to come into my area? Who am I, what is, what's the best way to be able to reach that?
Go For It Magazine wrote about them and they put a coupon in the magazine. They did. David.
I remember being at a White House briefing maybe eight years ago. The topic was economic development. And one of the top people in the Department of Commerce was talking to us and he mentioned, we've got 115, I think that was the number, different programs designed to help US companies do exports. 115 different programs. And he said, the problem is, that's far too many. You know, one, one is designed around radishes and one is designed around beef. And then one's designed around high-tech manufacturing, but there's 115 of these. No one can ever sort through it. So what's the solution? And a bunch of city leaders in the room, right, practical people really. And they were thinking, oh, it's going to be consolidation. It's going to be, we're going to have three tracks, you know, whatever. The answer was, we're going to create 116th program. The point of which is to guide you through the other 115.
Perfect.
Right?
That's good.
And, and it was funny because the city people in the room of both political parties just kind of looked at each other like, are you kidding us?
Yeah.
That's not how you run anything.
That's good.
So I always get this feeling when we start talking about economic development programs is it seems like there's hundreds of little things out there, each of which touches about two other things. And I'm not sure anything really has got bang to it.
Sure. Well, look at the Northern California Trade Organization. I mean, they're very active, but they basically hold large events and they connect you to, to trading with everybody from Ireland to China. So.
I don't know if you can sort all this out easily. It's, it's tough.
So I would like to change my budget request to 250,000. The hundred was not enough, obviously.
Okay.
And I need a new program.
Okay, but also then, is Kurt willing to give you 125 out of his 952?
I was going to try to cut somewhere to give him 125 instead of.
Well, what, what would you like to cut?
I don't know. We, we're not through all the programs yet. But you know, there's, there's always a way, there's always a way to cut, especially to support all our small business owners. Because if we can grow them, then the money always grows.
I, I would again tend to, in respect where the budgets are and what's been proposed here and maybe have Diane and Kurt work on this by the next meeting to come up with what a workable solution would be to address what Garrett's talking about. I think, I think if I go back to the days of when I started on council and it was, we want X amount of code enforcement officers, instead of talking about what do we want them to do and what's the outcome that we're looking for. I think Garrett stated an outcome. I don't know if any of us up here are qualified to put a dollar amount to what he's talking about. But I think our staff and the chamber could probably come up with a solution to, or at least an idea or a plan on how to address what he's asking for and let them come up with the number, not us.
That's a good idea.
That's my two cents.
Okay, so.
But if it's the 115th program, I don't know.
Kurt, you heard that too, right?
It can't be.
Oh, there it is. You were sitting over there.
I, you know, I think as, as a city, we should be looking at ways to evolve our relationship with the chamber. I don't know if this is it. It might be something better. It might be something more strategic than this. I'd, I'd like to take sort of that, slow, slow this a little and, and take a really, you know, hard look at what our vision is for our relationship with the chamber and the local business community.
And that's, that is also a good idea. We started, we tried to do that right at the beginning of, of cityhood, except that we had the wrong personnel at the Chamber of Commerce at that point in time. Because we knew.
Turn to the bridge.
We knew that there were, there was a need for the chamber's role to evolve since it had sort of been, the chamber along with community council had really been the city council for Rancho Cordova for like 10 years, so.
Well, and the football and baseball coach too.
We needed, we needed it to evolve.
One question is what works best elsewhere in this whole space?
Right. So can we discuss, let's discuss this as a different point in time.
Well, let's let staff take a look at their plan in economic development about how they may incorporate that into their plan.
That's fine.
Their resources.
So that's economic development. So we have one more. We have Public Works.
May, I just want to be clear about the budget numbers. The number that's being proposed for Business Incentive and Revolving Loan Program is 250,000. Obviously, we always talk at staff level with different entities, including the chamber. If there's any way that we could partner on, together on, on certain things, we could do it. I want to come back to this overall discussion and the overall budget discussion. There is finite amount of funding to talk about. If your desire is to increase the 250,000 to something different, we need to hear that from now. And we need to identify where else we need to cut. But, but I think.
I guess, Cyrus, what I was suggesting was, I think Garrett has a need that he wants to have addressed. I'm, I guess I'm asking, can staff look at what's on here based on the fact that he, he's saying this is a priority that he would like to see in this plan? Correct me if I'm wrong, that's what I'm saying. And allow staff to figure out what that would cost and, and include it in some way in this and then maybe make a recommendation of where that savings can come from.
And this may be completely outside of the Measure H process. This could be discussions for the next two or three months because we need to take a more strategic look at this and also take a deeper look at this.
If that's your recommendation, I would be fine with that if that's your recommendation.
We don't know what the recommendation, because we don't know exactly, you know, I think it's best.
Basically, under this timeframe, we have weeks to figure this out. Right?
Well, and the charge here, the charge here is exceptionally broad. Right?
Exceptionally broad.
From help with financing, help with recruitment, help with training, help with growth, help with marketing, I don't know.
It takes 450 different people in Boulder, Colorado to do that. Okay, so we're obviously. Okay, so we're obviously not going to put together a stable of 450 people. But the chamber has 450 members. Those 450 members are at your disposal to help you do what you want to do. So, all right, leaving economic development and going into public works.
Wait, I, what? I, I just want to help our city staff understand what their recommendation is. I was making a recommendation to include it in this plan, in this budget. Yep. I heard from the city manager that he's concerned that that, that the timeframe to flesh an idea like this out would take considerably longer. If that's the case, then we're talking about next fiscal year. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor.
Kurt, can you come to the top?
Kurt Haven, Economic Development Director and Neighborhood Services. I appreciate Councilman Gaitwood's energy. I would caution on some of his comments about what I said, so just put that out there. The second thing is, this was brought to me Friday afternoon around 3 o'clock. And so conversations with Diane over the weekend and this morning has a long ways to go to be vetted. I personally believe that the way we work together, my department and the chamber, we cover all those things, finances, marketing, business retention, business attraction. And the proof of that is that we have an employee named Megan Huber, who's our business liaison, who works with SBA loans, marketing plans, you know, all the tools that we have. When we were in Texas, I didn't see the SBA. I didn't see that they probably have one. I didn't see, you know, score, I didn't see, in the Sacramento region, we spent a billion dollars on workforce development. We've never done a ton of workforce development in the city because there's 13 vendors that want to help us weekly on workforce development. So a lot of these things, you know, we do. And we use the tools that we have in economic development and we use the chamber. I would love to do more with the chamber, but you know, I, I used to run a chamber at one time, so I know how tough that is. She has a capacity issue, okay? And so I can't go to her today and say, hey, we need so many hours of a person to help us do that. I don't know what that is yet. And we can't have that figured out by next Monday, that's not going to happen. So I don't know what that is that we want to do with them. I would love to do something with the chamber, but I don't know what that is. And it will take money. So if the, the cause here is to help the chamber get through their budget system or, you know, raise money, I've been in that seat. It's a very tough job to run a Chamber of Commerce. You know, this money has to go towards a person. It can't just be a grant. It has to go to another live body because there's no capacity issue at the chamber either. Just like my department, we have people, you know, out there working. So there's no, unless someone sees something I can't see, there's no emergency. There's no, this isn't getting done and people are leaving Rancho Cordova. This isn't getting done and we're not attracting businesses. There's, there's no emergency. If it's to, you know, how do we get a closer relationship with the chamber? I'm all for it. But I'm not going to have it ready in two weeks. So it'd have to be a different funding source at different time. That's my.
I think that you heard from some of us that maybe going forward in your strategic plan, I mean, it's been about a year, I think, since you showed it to us last.
So we have an update that's coming. We sat today with the city manager and our communications department. It was August was the last time that we met. We have an update coming, we'd love to share it with you as soon as possible.
This might be something that we could ask you to.
So Donald, that would be a perfect item to include some discussion of in your update to the city council.
Sure.
Okay, cool.
Thanks, Eric.
So we're, we're on 952,000 and we're going to move into Public Works.
So under Public Works, there's a few programs that are the continuation of successful programs such as the Enhanced City Urban Forest, as well as the Enhanced Litter and Graffiti Abatement Program and Phase Two of the Way Finding Sign Initiative. And then there's some additional projects such as the Sunrise Boulevard Road Rehabilitation Project and the Sidewalk Repair Project. And Albert is in the room if you have specific questions about these line items.
Questions for Albert.
Yeah, Albert. You've been doing a good job on getting the sidewalks in, like for the Rancho Cordova Elementary School in that area. But as you go to that neighborhood, you see where the sidewalk stopped. And is there funding that will be coming from Measure H? Is it part of a regular budget? Or is there other grants you could get to put more sidewalk in sidewalks you don't have the sidewalks yet? Because that's really important to a lot of people, you know, they still have to walk on either the street or walk in the gutter or in somebody's lawn. We need to have that done also. So is that something that's in the mill or are we still waiting for that?
Fortunately, the city has been very successful in using various funding sources to also leverage federal and state dollars. And so for the Rancho Cordova Elementary Project that you mentioned, those were state ATP dollars, Active Transportation Program. And we've been successful in receiving another about 1.8 million dollars to do a very similar sidewalk project in the Cordova neighborhood just west of Coloma and just north of White Rock that will similarly connect the schools and transit neighborhoods and retail. This particular, the sidewalk repair project proposed with this Measure H is for repairing individual sections that have lifted sidewalks or cracks.
Okay.
So it's really, it's a combination of all of those sources in order to best address this need.
So we're talking about then repairing the sidewalks already there? And then you're looking for grants and other tax or measures or something like that to get the money to go put in new sidewalks where necessary, right? Okay, I thought that was just going to be more sidewalks going in. But I know that there are sidewalks that need to be repaired, and so thank you for that.
So PW3, did you have that last year? Enhanced litter and graffiti abatement.
Yes.
Did you spend it all?
I believe the, I would need to double check the numbers to be sure, but I believe that we have been utilizing all of those dollars each year.
So 150,000 got spent? Okay. Enhanced City Urban Forest. Did you spend all that?
I believe there may have been a minor amount left over.
Of, just a quick question, guys.
And we've planted like four neighborhoods?
The, it's been even more than that, actually. The city has been successful in doing a tree a day, 365 a year.
Super.
So of these, this stuff across, how much did we, do we have, can I get the numbers that show how much we spent last year versus what actually they're asking for?
Sure.
To see if there's actual any savings that we can put towards other things? Because if we didn't spend it, then we didn't need it. Or we're going to need it this year.
It's more, more across the whole thing, just what we actually spent out of these groups.
It's probably important to be cautious about cutting Public Works when you consider that when people talk about the Community Enhancement Fund. Everybody wants more roads repaired now. And everybody wants more police for more public safety. Those are the two most talked about enhancements.
So. The Legacy Fund, have you guys, you guys have tapped that last year, right? And you pulled from it to put into the rest of the numbers? Or did you leave it at 2.66, 2.2 million 668,000?
The Legacy, and we are going to talk about the Legacy Fund and what's the account. Just want to remind the council, we have with the three major projects that the council has tentatively approved, the price tag on those three projects is about $9 million. So.
And we have 2.6.
And whatever we have, whatever we have in the Legacy Fund is, whatever we have. And the idea was to accumulate the funds in the Legacy Fund so we could do major community projects. With the three projects this year, we will completely deplete that fund.
Albert, on the Sunrise Boulevard Road Rehabilitation. So you add half a million to it, we're still 3 million short. Andy, where the 3 million comes from?
We'll be pursuing grant funding, we'll be turning over every rock we can to try to fund a source, find a source for that. We think that the right project would be as presented here. But if necessary, we could look at alternatives to phase it even more narrowly.
So the sidewalk repair one, that always bothers me a little. $2 million backlog and we're going to spend 90,000 towards it. Obviously, that's a, I don't know if any of us will be here on the council in that, that amount of time. Because every year we add to that backlog, I assume. I don't even know if we're, I don't even know if we're staying level there. In the past, we have talked about, and this would be the opportunity to do it, take the 500, apply it to that line instead. And actually make a big, big difference on all the sidewalk repairs.
In looking at the deferred maintenance, we actually recently did a citywide survey of all the roadways in the city. And it's, that is another number that has actually grown over time. We're looking to raise the streets to a level of pavement condition index of about an 80 or 82, which is the most efficient level and actually the cheapest level to maintain your roads at. We're looking at in excess of $100 million over 10 years to achieve that.
Wow.
And it's about, it's on the order of $9 million a year to maintain the 68 Pavement Condition Index that we're sitting at at this time.
And if you were at 80, how much would you save?
I don't have that number with me right now.
But getting from 60 to 80, there would be some annual savings.
Yes.
Couple million or something.
Maybe.
Maybe.
I would need to look up that number.
We're just doing better than the county was though. I know Toby Johnson was a supervisor and he was asked, and he said, well, you get the sidewalk every 20 years. And I thought, well, we're doing a little bit better than that, I think. Thank you.
And that was an exaggeration if they were getting them every 20.
Yeah.
Most residents are seeing 50 to, and there's what, the 99 year.
The 99 year plan, yeah, that was famous.
It was 24 years. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
Okay.
The administration of the fund is set at 5% of revenues. Therefore, the recommendation you see here is an amount of $400,000.
Actually, I wondered where that number came from, thank you for the explanation.
Up over time or have we always stuck it?
It's based upon 5%, so.
Always been at 5%?
It's ranged between 300,000, 350, 400, depending on annual revenues. And it covers a variety of things. It's not just staff costs, it's the production and the mailing of the annual reports. It's the software needed, it's legal time.
Are we exceeding that amount in our administration of Measure H?
I think we've done our best to come close to it. Just from experience, managing this kind of funds at 5% among various public jurisdictions is phenomenal. Just, just a note, we've, this is, this is our Measure H team. So an $8 million program.
Well, and some of us were just blown away by the description of the software that you gave last time in terms of what it could do and the incredible access that everybody has to all of the projects. It's just really remarkable. Talk about, talk about transparency.
Well, and if you don't take into account the city-led stuff that also have RFPs and contracts and everything else that have to be a part of that, you're also adding in, what, 50 to 75 contracts? That have to be managed, not only to develop with legal and everybody else, but then also to manage that they're actually doing it? It's not, I.
And all the reporting requirements.
I've always been concerned at that number. My, you all do a great job, I'm just concerned that that's fairly low comparatively to the amount of work. Especially in community grants.
It's very lean, it really is.
Would lawsuits to defend grants come out of this fund?
No.
Okay, so.
Those, those may not be one-time fees.
All right, so that's the bigger picture.
So the remaining category under the Community Enhancement Fund would be the legacy projects. This sheet looks a little bit different because we were trying to show you both the estimated transfers in as well as out of the Legacy Fund. So we're estimating that the Legacy Fund balance will be 5,300,000 as of June 30. And then you'll see what we anticipate going into the fund, either because we're anticipating unspent funds out of the 17, 18 budget. You'll see there's an allocation, the 2,668,000 that we're anticipating going into the fund in fiscal year 18, 19, et cetera. So this is representing both transfers in and as well as outs over the course of a few fiscal years. And this is where you're going to see the large-scale projects such as Civic Center, Little League, girls softball, et cetera.
So my, my question for this was, I don't know if it was last meeting when we discussed the pool and that four of us were willing to explore the idea. Is, I don't see a date to that one comparatively to some of these other ones. Would we have the financing in hand or are we talking paying it out of capital reserves and then putting it back? Because the timeframe for that seemed like it was a lot faster than.
I think based on the, based on the discussions we've had, we'll be able to meet their deadline, their timeline. So the, the timing, the timing would be.
Through Legacy Fund allocations coming in to that?
I, you know, the reality is that not all of these funds will come in at the same time. We have to, we have a fund balance that we can float the funding as needed. So I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so having.
We already voted on it.
Having reviewed the big picture, we now have another 50% of the applications to go through.
So my suggestion at this point would be to move on to our other agenda item and finish this at the next meeting. The community grants. That's.
I, and then that would be the council's obvious, it's council's decision, council call. What would be helpful to staff if we have a level of certainty on the things that have been presented to you? Because the, having to revisit and restart the discussion at the next meeting will be, will not be productive, that's the only request that I have.
I.
You would need an agreement to start with page nine, period.
We've only added dollars, we haven't cut any dollars, I think. Which means we are going to have to cut from what was presented to us.
Right. So we would need a recalculation of the first 18 pages.
We're only halfway through, we've been through nine pages.
Are you asking for that this evening or on the 21st?
On the 21st.
On the 21st.
And at that point, I mean, the most likely outcome is not probably for us to go back through all those grants.
No.
My guess is that would be hard. What we're likely to do is look at the staff recommendations or the legacy allocation for the difference. That's what I would predict, we would, we'd be most likely to do.
That's what we, and again, that was why my suggestion at the beginning of the evening was start with these so that you know what you're sacrificing. Because ultimately, no offense to Albert and Kurt, them and then last year, the Boys and Girls Club to a certain extent, they were the sacrificial lambs. We took, we know, oh, we're 300 grand over, okay, we're taking this much from Public Works and this much from economic development and go figure it out. So I, that's why I think it was important that that needs to be part of the conversation now. And then when we come back and we start looking at those additional grants, where we're going to find the savings. Because it's what we've had to do every year.
So Cyrus, if the question was, can we lock in all those staff proposals? I think no. That's not certain.
Yeah, I would agree.
So could we request if the council could make itself available at 4 o'clock on 21st? Because our goal is to make the final funding decision on Measure, Measure H programs on that day. Could we start earlier and try to finish it that night?
Start at, start at 3?
I could, I could not do that early. I could probably. I could probably do four.
4 o'clock, okay.
Okay, so Stacy, do we have speaker cards still?
For items related to this agenda item, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 speaker cards. Whether or not they're all here, that's a different question. So I can do.
And also pointing out to the public that we are going to discuss these items. We're not going to discuss these items, but again, tonight, we're going to at the next meeting. So if you were still hoping for us to get to your item, it's not going to be discussed tonight.
Okay, except that people have waited until 20 minutes after 10. And it would only be polite to offer people an opportunity to put their comments on record tonight as opposed to necessarily having to come back.
My only comment to that is you should still come back if you care about your item because it's still up in the air whether or not we're going to fund it.
You're right.
But you can absolutely speak today, sure.
So whether or not these are approved already or not, Mayor Budge, do you?
Well, if we've already discussed.
So I'll let Stacy Delaney.
Can I clarify what I'm saying? Nothing's been approved. Nothing.
I think if the people are still here, they still want to talk.
Okay, so I'm.
I totally agree. Just let's not mislead people that just because we talked about something even in the community grants does not mean that you've officially been approved.
Okay, so Kimberly Key, are you here? Can you come forward, please? Would you still like to speak?
Her item is on page 10 and it's application number 14. I mean, I'm happy to wait till the next meeting if that would be better. So I mean, I'm here on behalf of the board and the staff and the club members that we have historically served in Rancho Cordova. When we were together last time, we talked about council support in bringing the Boys and Girls Club back to Rancho Cordova. Council member Terry gave the historical account and the chain of events that led to us not being funded this year. And so we are asking that we move forward. We provided a short-term plan and a long-term plan to expand our partnership in Rancho Cordova. We, there were two things that we discussed last time and that was that we reduced our ask and increased our in-kind by 25,000. And also that we were trying to find a new home because we were on the campus of Cordova High. And not being funded this school year, that space has been taken. But we have made several contacts and in fact, we're meeting with Mills Middle School tomorrow. The principal is very excited about having us on campus. So I would theoretically be able to report on that next meeting.
Super, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Linda Burkholder, are you here? And would you still like to speak?
Thank you. I'll defer until the next meeting.
Which item?
Page 11, number 34. 34 and 35, actually.
Next, we have Faza. Faza, okay, not here. Michael Deck, not here. Mary Nessel.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that. I put in the speaker card for the next item that had to, that was requested by River City Christian Church on their Christmas mall. My comments apply to all four items that they requested, all of which have been ongoing activities, nothing new. So I don't understand why now they're requesting Measure H funds be used for these activities. I think it's remarkable that they have never requested anything before. And now that Mr. Gatewood, who is associated with the church, is on our council, they are asking for things. And I think that it's extremely inappropriate that someone with a huge conflict of interest is not recusing himself from discussing on all of these items. So I'm very dismayed about a lot of things that I've heard talked about this evening. And I know of a few others that feel the same way. And I just, I'm very disappointed that there's been so much discussion. I think the Nike slogan, "Just say no," has come to mind. And I don't understand why the entire council, with regard to these issues being asked for by a church, are not, they're just flat, in my opinion, you should just flat out say no. And Mr. Terry, for your comments about this being a church and you're not being comfortable with some of this, I'll be so bold as to say it's one of the few times I've ever agreed with you. Thank you. Thanks, Mary. Okay. Okay. Tara Colvinbach? Okay, thanks, Tara. That's Whisker Warriors.
Item 44.
Okay.
Those are all the speaker cards I have for this item.
Super. Okay, Cyrus has a comment.
Just a quick comment. The council had directed staff at the last meeting that we will also be hearing a presentation on the community pool on the 21st. I just wanted to verify that this is still your intention.
Yes, just remember, we were supposed to have finished a lot more tonight. So brevity in that presentation would be.
It's probably a good lesson for all of us.
Thank you for your patience tonight, but yeah, yeah. We will still have a lot, we're going to have more to tackle than we thought we would.
Okay, super. All right. Thank you all for, does the Park District have any comments? Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, so already, that's the end of 16.1 and we're going to talk about 16.2.
Is there a staff presentation or should I just start talking?
There really isn't. The only reason this item is on the agenda because we were, it was, a suggestion was made by one of our council members and the council requested that this item be brought back to the council for a more detailed discussion since it was not on the agenda at the last meeting.
So all I'm suggesting, and David, you weren't here the last time, is if you looked at Measure B within the city and all of those funds weren't necessary for the projects that it was funding, like most of those things would not be built, right? We wouldn't have all of the money for an interchange without a Measure B and some of the other projects that were listed. So my suggestion, if you look at the funding world the way it is, we passed Measure H here, I'm not Measure H, Measure B. A handful of other communities did. Parts of the unincorporated county in Folsom didn't. And that's why we don't have these funds. My suggestion is that if we looked at doing a similar tax measure within the city, A, we would keep all of the money. So instead of getting 40 cents on the dollar, we're getting a dollar on the dollar. And so looking at funding those similar projects and other things that we might have wanted to do with the electorate that we have that supported those projects, even though it wasn't as good of a proposal to the community as this would be. And then also carving out a quarter of, so a half-cent sales tax was my suggestion. Carving out a quarter of it for affordable housing in some way, for things like Mather Veterans Village or putting more funds into Horizons or working with Bridge where we know we need some sort of affordable housing trust fund to make these project pencil. And my suggestion was, when we talked about this the first time, was to actually have staff go and do polling based on the past projects that essentially we have the best poll that money could buy, which was the last election where inferior proposal, Measure B, comparatively to what this would be to our city, passed by over 65 or 66.8% or whatever it was. So that's really the discussion is, do we want staff to explore a local tax measure to put on the November ballot that would fund these projects? Because essentially, right, whether it's an interchange that if we don't build it, at some point, we would end up with a building moratorium in the South. And we don't have all of the funds identified to build that. Measure B was a part of that, along with a connector and a bunch of other things. So I do know, and some of you might have already seen this, but Region Business did do a poll over the weekend showing right now, just on a very basic, basic question, that this idea is getting about a 60% approval rating right now. It's not, it wasn't as scientific as an actual poll would need to be to understand what are the things that people would be interested in having funded? How would we treat it? But again, the region tried to do this and failed. So do we take the bull by the horns like Sacramento and Elk Grove and other places that are looking at tax measures right now? Or do we wait for the collective will to try to do it again in two years, four years, whenever? So again, the question to me today isn't, are you in support of this idea? I guess the question is, are you interested in finding out in a more scientific way whether or not this is a potential for our city?
Well, I haven't watched the tape from the last meeting. I don't know how much you guys discussed it then.
We talked more process than position.
But in general, obviously, it's a pretty controversial proposal generally to talk about a tax increase. And what we did, building up to Measure H, took a while. Cyrus, I don't know if you recall or my colleagues, but I seem to think that was like an 18-month or something discussion with the community about what this could be and sort of a careful evaluation of how it might work. So.
I would agree that that was the timeline. We went from the Godby poll to language in, the poll was February and we had language by April. It was an idea that had been festering with staff for a while. At least that was the claim.
We'd certainly talked about it a lot before.
There was a catalyst for it. I'm saying that the idea of Measure B has been around for however many years. It failed, we still need those funds. Would we want to take the bull by the horns and do it ourselves? And fund those things and fund them more effectively because this raises more funds than Measure B did.
It is probably illustrative to look at the flack that City of Sacramento is getting about renewing their Measure U. Because, and, and there's a lot of distrust about whether, about the comments made in the paper about what the renewed Measure U would fund since arts has been added and homelessness has been added. And, and in reality, the original uses for Measure U were basically what's commonly called maintenance of effort because they had to, they had closed all of their city pools. So they reopened their city pools. They hired, they hired a bunch of people that they'd had to lay off. And we've just, we're only three years away from having been entrusted by the people with a very handsome amount of money. And we've just started the community oversight committee. And it just seems that this is not an appropriate time to ask people to vote for another sales tax increase.
Now, the only counter I'll say to that is, well, Garrett wasn't here. We unanimously endorse Measure B. This is the exact same purpose. With affordable housing to it. But we're raising the equal, an equal amount of funds. So you're right, but we also collectively just endorsed essentially the exact same idea except 60% of it went to RT and the region and to Caltrans.
There is a problem out there that actually Albert referenced earlier. I mean, if the number is $100 million of infrastructure maintenance that we've deferred or we inherited deferred, we want to be sure that our city is not upside down with regard to maintenance of infrastructure. And I do not, sitting here, do not have an answer to that question.
You also have a federal government that's proposing to go from an 80% share of infrastructure costs to 20%.
We need to, yeah, we need to deeply discount what we think we can get from the federal government with regard to infrastructure dollars. And perhaps we need to deeply discount what we think we can get from the state, depending on what happens with SB 1 and the electorate in the fall. So I think, you know, doing due diligence, we definitely have to be cognizant of that. But in general, I tend to agree with Linda's position and that it's been pretty recently that we asked. I think it's hard, hard to go back at this point and say, yeah, we need more, when the obvious answer would be, well, don't do this. Do the infrastructure if that's more important.
My, again, my only question to that would be, where was that concern when we endorsed Measure B?
It was a different concept because it was county-wide.
But it was less funding for our city.
But, but there's, there's a shared pain there. The question is now, you know.
The need still exists and cities like Folsom and parts of the unincorporated county are denying our residents the benefit of what we said is an important, an important source of funds. Period. You're right. There was a collective share of pain and there were a handful of communities that said, no, we're not doing it. Therefore, they denied everyone else the resources that we need to grow our communities. If I'm the only one that feels this way, then we can just move on. It's fine. To me, this I thought was a fruitful conversation. Looking at what our electorate has done when it's come to certain tax measures. If you looked at something and what it raised and we were going to get 200 million in 30 years and we go back and we say, if we could raise 375 million for infrastructure and unlogjam a whole bunch of affordable housing projects that we've already zoned or said that we wanted, things on Folsom Boulevard that we wish we could do, but we need $4 or $5 million more, is that enough of a value to this community to vote for it? And if they voted for literally an inferior proposal to what this would be and what this would mean to the City of Rancho Cordova, when we just endorsed essentially the same thing? We would put the same projects on and more.
Bob?
I don't think it would be successful if we put it on the ballot because people right now are very negative about the 12 cents that the governor put on them. And they're going to be voiding that down, I think. And I think they would be voiding this down also at the same time because they have that kind of a mood right now that they're really not happy with that 12 cents. I mean, if you look at the gas station right now, you're going to be paying 3.30, 3.40, something like this. And that 12 cents doesn't seem to be as much right now as it was when they first began. But it's still 12 cents a tax. They're going to say, I'm going to say no on that. At least that's what the numbers that I've gotten, looking at the news and everything and the polls. But I think that would be asking us to be defeated. Two years, maybe, we would have a better chance. But I think right now it would be a negative because you already had a negative on tax.
Garrett?
Please don't put another tax on our business owners. Please. Look, I, I, we went with it with the Measure H fund and I can speak to this because it delivery affects me, my family and all my employees. And we, I run a company in the City of Rancho Cordova. One of the best parts about the City of Rancho Cordova is now we're going to have lower taxes than some of the people that are in our region, which means more business will come to us. Please keep us attractive and going that path. I do not want to put another tax on the business that I run or on any business owners that I know. We do not agree with this kind of thing. It hurts. And, and we have to have a real good reason for doing it. And right now, we just got out of, and we're just coming out and things are just starting to get better and it just hurts us right now. So you might be able to come to us in two years and talk about it. But right now, let's just stay where we're at, very comfortable. And, you know, let's just keep going forward with that.
So did we have anybody signed up to speak to this?
Yes, we have two speaker cards.
Okay.
I don't think it'll change anything in the council's discussion tonight, but just, I think we would be remiss if we didn't just flag a couple developments that will likely occur in this. occur in this area. There's a state initiative that's qualified for the ballot that will probably bump the required percentage for local taxes to 2/3. You'll recall that in the last couple of years, there's already been a
This would have been 2/3 anyways because it was earmarked.
There, there has already been a significant change in the required titles and terms of, of taxes that's passed. And in future answer to your questions about how long it takes to get polling done, it does, it can be done in a month, but it generally takes two to three months to fully process and, and fully vet.
Thank you. So speakers?
Art Paletta will be the first speaker, followed by Darrell Langwell.
Welcome, Art.
Thank you, mayor and council members. I put down that I was neutral on this, and I'm still not un-neutral. But my concern was, what infrastructures particularly and housing initiatives specifically were going to be on this?
We don't know.
Well, until I found out what was going to be on it, I was going to suggest that the lockbox system be put in place on any funding that is brought in in any manner for a specific item. And once that item is complete, then we go into a sunset clause for that so that we don't end up in perpetuity as we would if it was on a bond. And then it wouldn't be on the homeowner's back. It would be on, like you say, I'm not sure that a half-cent tax rate, I can see where it's not going to be popular. So I would say, even though I'm neutral, maybe in two years, I think he would be right. But right at this moment, gas prices are going up, everybody else is trying to get whatever it was that we got back in taxes, and it's only going to reduce our discretionary income. But I would rather see that income discretionarily put on businesses than I would want it on homeowners. So I would say, yeah, I'm neutral, but not right now. I wouldn't want this to come about.
Thank you very much, Art. We appreciate that. Darrell?
Good late evening, mayor and council members, Darrell Langwell, Vineyards neighborhood. I am definitely opposed to this tax. We're getting taxed to death. There are a lot of us in this community that are on fixed incomes, and there's a lot of low income in the community. And those are the people that get hurt worse, regardless of how small people claim that these taxes are. And if this is a general tax, I think it will be what I consider to be a boondoggle like Measure H. The second item after all of the law enforcement on Measure H is speed up street repairs. I looked at Public Works and I did not see $1 set aside for street repair. And that's what people, when we were, when Measure H was being touted, was security and street repair. And if this was a general tax, if the same thing would happen, stuff would start going flying everywhere and the money would not go where it said it would be going. So I don't want to see another tax added to my purchases in this town.
Darrell, and I think you heard the council roundly not agree with, with my idea here, but I would tell you, first off, it would have been a bond. So it would, it would have been a sales tax that you would have bonded for, so it would have had a sunset date. It also would have been earmarked for only projects. But to your point on Measure H, though, 500,000 is going towards repairs on Sunrise Boulevard and
I live on Ariman Drive and it's just a patch of potholes.
Okay, and then $90,000 is going towards replacement and repair of existing sidewalks. So
I don't drive on a sidewalk.
Okay, but, but a half million of it is going to roads.
Right, but
I'm just saying, you said that you didn't see anything for roads in Measure H. I just want to point out there are things in there.
Donald, actually, he said he didn't see anything for street repair. And so
Sunrise Boulevard isn't a street repair?
It's, it's his right to get up and, and express his opinion. So, okay, so we, we definitely don't have three votes to go any further considering it's a tax. So I don't think we have anything else to come before us tonight.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so I have two comments. Number one, you actually provided us a supplemental, supplemental package, which was the smud PowerPoint. So thank you very much. And then the second thing, I would ask that we adjourn in the, in the memory of an old friend, Lieutenant Colonel Daniel Weber. He was one of the original members at CORPAK back in the 70s and 80s when CORPAK had 15 people and two of them had to be stationed at Mather. And he and his family lived in the meadows for, have lived in the meadows for the last 40 years. And he passed away recently, and so he was a good friend of Rancho Cordova and will miss him. So with that, meeting adjourned.